Good evening and welcome. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening once again, and we're delighted to have you here with us this evening. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube, as well as on Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. If you would like to speak this evening but have not yet signed up, please see our staff person, Ms. Lena Parvics, out in the hallway. Sign up for public comment. We'll close at 6:30 PM. Now, first, I want to begin on a somber note this evening. I want to take a moment to extend our deepest sympathies to the family of Karen Glasgow, our former Director of Labor Relations, who passed away unexpectedly last week. As many of you know, Karen joined us in 2013 after many years of service in the same role for both the Boston Fire Department and the Corporation Council's Office at City Hall, where I actually had the first opportunity to work with her in the early 2000s, and we've been friends ever since. Her work to rebuild the Office of Labor Relations and to cultivate constructive relationships with our bargaining partners left BPS in a much better position and to serve students, which has always been Karen's focus. Her warmth, her humor endeared many to her when she was here at BPS and in any place she went, quite frankly. And her former colleagues that have been left behind here are hit quite hard by the loss, as am I, and as are many others in our community. You know, specifically hard is Karen leaves behind her husband Brendan and her nine-year-old son Noah, and, you know, she really adored that boy more than really anything in this world. And so, I'd like to ask everyone to please join me now in a moment of silence in Karen's memory. Thank you. Well, now, next, on a little bit of a brighter note, I do want to begin by welcoming our new student representative. To my left, to your right, Ms. Evelyn Reyes. As we mentioned at the last school committee meeting, Evelyn is a junior at the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science. She's also a member of the Boston Student Advisory Council, where she's served for over a year as part of the leadership team. She's also played a key role as an organizer with the March for Our Lives in Boston. And next month, as Mr. O'Neil was just discussing with her, she'll be presenting on behalf of Boston Public Schools students at the Council of Great City Schools Conference in Baltimore, excuse me. We know she'll represent our students well, both in Baltimore, as well as here, every other Wednesday night, and really in any place she goes. So, please join me in welcoming Evelyn once again. We wish you well. And as you can see from our festive tables here, this upcoming October is College Month in the Boston Public Schools. I want to thank Marcia Innis Mitchell, the Director of Post-Secondary Partnerships and Initiatives, for creating these posters celebrating the Alma-Moderative Committee members and the interim superintendent. I know that Ms. Peril will have more to say about College Month a little bit later in her report. I do want to note, however, as I'm sure Mr. O'Neil will note later on, that BC does, in fact, have a better football record than Florida State University this year. We'll move on to the approval now of minutes from the September 12th School Committee meeting, as well as the September 20th Planning Retreat of the School Committee. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you can access those minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 12th and September 20th meetings as presented. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any discussion to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll move on now to the interim superintendent's report. I present to you our interim superintendent, Ms. Laura Peril.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto, and good evening, everyone. I'm not going to get in the middle of the football rivalry because my alma mater has never been known for its football, but it did have a very impressive and continues women's hockey team, so I'll just stick with that. I want to start out this evening's report by providing a brief update to the school committee and the public on the annual state accountability results for schools and school districts, which are being released publicly tomorrow by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, this is more of a FYI, that there will be information forthcoming in tomorrow's papers, but for now, the results are strictly embargoed by DESI. So, we will post a press release and a link to the full list of accountability results on our district website, bostonpublicschools.org. School leaders have all been notified about their results from 2018 and are aware of the public release. I have been briefed on the results for BPS and all of our schools. And while I can't share details at this time, I am pleased to report that a number of our schools are showing significant improvements, but simultaneously, several other schools continue to struggle or have shown declines and are still in need of targeted supports. So, it'll be clear that we continue to have work to do to combat some district-wide trends that have given us concern, and we'll go into greater detail on how we will support our highest-needs schools once the results are public. I anticipate that the School Committee will receive a formal briefing on the accountability results at our next meeting on October 10th. But one of tonight's presentations that you will hear tonight on the school support learning networks and that reorganization of how Central Office is providing support to schools will lay an important foundation for that conversation, so the timing works well. With some highlights, last Thursday, Mayor Walsh, School Committee Member Regina Robinson, and I joined students, staff, families, and volunteers of the Curlicatah Eight School in Jamaica Plain to celebrate their grand reopening of the school's library, which was the result of two years of volunteer work and community fundraising of nearly $100,000. The new library boasts an updated collection of books, technology, and online resources, which will allow students to research and collaborate in a manner that's in line with digital expectations for 21st century learning. So many community members came together to create something wonderful that is both student-focused and promotes learning. I'd like to thank Principal Katie Grassa, the Curly School Library Committee, and the volunteers and donors who made this possible, and especially the enthusiastic students who were only too happy to take advantage of the new space. On Tuesday, the New England Patriots Hall of Famer Andre Tippett was on hand to donate $10,000 to the Haley Pilot School in Roselandale. The grant is from the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation and the New England Dairy Council. It will be used for health-focused initiatives and the Fuel Up to Place 60 program, an in-school nutrition and wellness initiative. And we want to thank the Dairy Council and the Patriots for their generous support of our students. Also, I want to thank the Boston Teachers Union for holding their successful Back-to-School Fair for students and families last Saturday. About 200 volunteers worked to sort and give away more than 40,000 free books to about 2,000 students, parents, and educators. The BTU works with First Book and the American Federation of Teachers, along with numerous community organizations, to put together this wonderful event, which also includes face painting, dancing, and other fun activities for families. And I'd like to thank everyone at the BTU, and particularly BTU President Jessica Tang, for hosting this wonderful event. Let's see, one more. There was an interesting professional development and networking event for our social studies teachers last Friday. Thirty-five BPS educators, along with School Committee Member Michael O'Neil, went into the USS Constitution in Charlestown, where they met with 200 Gold Star family members, along with educators from local historical sites. And educators had an opportunity to use all the resources and learning tools of the facility and explore areas of the ship not usually open to the public and interact with these Gold Star families. So, thank you, Mr. O'Neil, for being part of that as well. Finally, back to the friendly rivalries. I do want to remind everyone that October is College Month in the Boston Public Schools and the city of Boston. We're encouraging students and families at all grade levels to begin planning now for college and career. Friday, October 5th, is College Pride Day, when everyone is encouraged to wear clothing from their alma-motors to promote a college-going culture for our students. I'd ask you all to join in on that. And on Saturday, October 27th, BPS will hold the Seventh Annual Citywide College and Career Fair at the Reggie Lewis Track and Athletic Center in Roxbury. And so, there, BPS students can meet with representatives from various colleges and universities to learn about their options, along with how to gain access to assistance for financial aid and other resources. So, we want to encourage everyone to take advantage of that fair on the 27th and break out your college sweatshirts for Friday. That's the report.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Peril. Before we move on to members' questions and discussion, I'd also like to take one additional moment to congratulate our fellow member, Ms. Jerry Robinson, on her upcoming retirement from the Boston Children's Museum, where she has worked for 45 years. Earlier this week, Ms. Robinson was honored with the Nan Bennett K. Great Friends to Kids Award at a celebratory breakfast, that included Mayor Walsh, many fellow members on the School Committee, and many dear friends and colleagues. And in fact, I want to note, Monday, September 24th, 2018, was, in fact, Jerry Robinson Day in the city of Boston, and she has the proclamation to prove it. So, we want to congratulate her. Now, you're, of course, our expert on early childhood. You've served us well on this committee for a number of years and serve us through co-chairing the Opportunity and Achievement Task Force, GAPS Task Force, for the committee as well. So, we really appreciate your work. We look forward to continuing working with you and are happy to celebrate along with you in this milestone.
It gives me more time to work in the schools.
Are there any other questions or discussion for the superintendent's report? Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you for your report. I just wanted to say thank you to Jerry Robinson for all your work all these years. I know you already said thank you, but I just think it's so important for all of our young women to see all the work that you've done, young men too, but as a woman of color and everything that you've accomplished, and how much you care and how much time you put into everything. I would just like to say thank you for all the work you've done that has led, you know, all of us down this path and has made this road for other people to come forth. I know you're not going anywhere, but I do think it's important to acknowledge people because, you know, we never do that as a culture, and so I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, so two quick things. One, I want to echo what Ms. Oliver Davila said. Ms. Robinson, it's been such a delight to work with you on your time in the committee. You have taught me so much about early education. You are our expert on it. We turn to you for your advice. Worked with you on the last superintendent search, a range of options. I'm sorry I could not make the breakfast, but I wanted to make sure to honor you and your work, and I'm delighted that the Children's Museum did that. And second superintendent, on what you said about the opportunity on the Constitution, I wanted to make sure to call out Ms. Natasha Scott, who is the Director of History and Social Studies for the district, because she actually put together, she actually sniffed out this opportunity with the Constitution Museum. They were interested in maybe doing something for educators. She first got the opportunity for it to be all BPS educators. Unfortunately, being in September, it was early in the year, and our teachers are busy in the school, so she was able to get 45 folks there. And it was absolutely, from Boston Public Schools, and then there were a total of 200 educators overall from many other districts in the area. But it was absolutely fascinating to, first of all, be able to go out on the USS Constitution, but two, have these deep talks with folks from the Old North Church and all the other things along the Freedom Trail about the opportunities available for our students. And Ms. Scott literally had the best line that I really think is a district we should be thinking about, which is making the city our classroom. Because when I talked to folks from Carver and other, Drakeatt and other towns around who happened to be there, they said, "Well, no, we don't bring our students into Boston. That's too far." And yet, right in our backyard, we literally have living history, and there's nothing like bringing it to life than actually being at the sites. And to find out that the National Park Service actually has a grant available to bus BPS students for free, and it runs out in October, but they're looking to get it extended, I would love if we really try to push this throughout our entire district to get our students the experience of traveling around the city and seeing these great resources that we have and bringing the history to life. Because there's nothing like, it's one thing to read it in an old textbook, and it's another thing to be at the Old North Church or to be out on the Constitution or to walk the Freedom Trail. And so, thank you, Ms. Scott, for pushing this. I had a tremendous conversation with the educators who were there, who wanted to talk to me about the excitement programs that they're doing. They also wanted to talk to me about the superintendent search and about air conditioning in the classrooms and about can we put solar panels on the roofs. So, these are folks that have tremendous ideas. We had very spirited conversations, and I thank each of them for the conversation, but particular thanks to Ms. Scott for putting this together. And hopefully, next year. Thank you also to Captain Schick of the Constitution. He's the new captain. He's the one who wants to do this and expand deeply the ties with BPS. And I think we have a real opportunity to bring this to life for our students. So, hopefully, Ms. Scott gets the leeway to help push this across the entire district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Dr. Uriarte.
I too congratulate Jerry again for a tremendous career and, you know, a wonderful, wonderful event on Monday. I did want to ask Laura whether you can give us a little bit of information on how things are going at the start of school, transportation, et cetera. I was expecting some reporting, because last week, you know, there were a lot of issues that were sort of left, you know, sort of like in the midair. So, I was wondering whether we could have, you know, an update on transportation and some of the issues that you brought up last week.
Thank you. We could do that in follow-up unless, John Hanlon, you have any quick highlights to offer? What's that?
He has very good news, because I asked him walking in.
Why?
He's prepared to talk, because I asked him walking in, so.
Thank you, John. So, while John is getting settled, this is John Hanlon, our Chief of Operations, who oversees a number of divisions, including transportation. And so, in the, we have continued to work on, as I reported at the last School Committee, we've continued to work on on-time transportation on the buses, which was beginning to head in the right direction. Some of our concerns were around monitors, which we continue to work on. And so, we can bring you back a full update on that, but meanwhile, John has a few highlights that he can share.
Thank you. So, as has been reported in Superintendent Peril's superintendent remarks, two weeks ago, we are off to a better start than we were last year and a better start than we were two years ago as well. I do not have the data from two years ago. I do have a line graph that shows that we are above both of the last two years, day-to-day through the first 14 days of school today, marked the 15th day, I believe. What I can tell you is the on-time performance average for our AM buses over the last three days for the bell was 86%, 86%, 85%. Within 15 minutes of the bell was 98%, 98%, 96%. And within 30 minutes of the bell, it's essentially 100% arriving within that time span. Last year, those averages were on-time, 78%, 80%, 79%. On-time for the bell, 96%, 97%, 96% within 15 minutes. Whichever way you slice it, as we look at the AM and at the PM, we're doing better than we were last year. I do have the call center data prepared, but I don't have it in front of me. I can also tell you that our average hold times are down from last year to this year. I know earlier this year, they were down by about 30% from last year to this year in terms of the average hold time. A lot of that is attributable to increasing our call center staff by 25% from 32 staff members last year at the opening of the year to 40. We also are happy to say that we have made some advancements in the Where's My School Bus app. And in fact, one of the problems that we had this year is the app has been down only periodically because the volume of people using it is so high, which is great because it shows that it's a resource that people are out and about using on a daily basis. And often, as I'm out in the field, either visiting schools or I'm on my way into the office, I'll stop and chat with families who are waiting with their children for a bus and assisting them in downloading that app or getting on that app to be able to use it to track their buses. But still a ways to go. We're not where we want to be yet. I am happy to say, though, that the trajectory that we're on will put us on a better path than we've been in recent years, which is largely attributable to the nonstop work that goes on in the Transportation Office at the other end of the hall. And I just want to give a shout-out to that staff while I have the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Can you talk a little bit about the situation of the bus monitors?
Yes, and forgive me, I'm remiss for not bringing that up. We did have some serious challenges early in the school year with regard to bus monitors. The fact of the matter is, when we had our bus monitor bid, far fewer monitors showed up for that bid than what we expected. We answered the call, if so to speak, by hiring a lot more monitors from that, by looking at student accommodation needs and understanding, like, who actually needs monitors and who doesn't, so we could free up some monitors to perform other runs that had been uncovered by monitors. As of, I think it was this past Monday, we had what might have been our first day yet this school year, where 100% of our runs were covered by monitors, so we're continuing to make some advancements in that area. I was really frustrated by that, just on a personal note, because this was an area in transportation we actually made some advancements in over the course of the summer and late last school year by restructuring the nature of that department, by doing monitor assignment differently in terms of optimizing the monitor schedules. And so, it was troubling to see that we weren't where we wanted to be, but we have made a lot of progress in that area as well. Again, still room to grow, for sure, but I'm happy to say that we've made some significant progress.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Thank you, Dr. Uriarte. Well, I noted earlier with Ms. Reyes that I was neglectful in asking her if she wanted to say a few welcoming words when I introduced her earlier, so I wanted to give her an opportunity now to say a few words of introduction. Ms. Reyes.
So, I just wanted to say hello to everybody, and that I am here and happy and excited to be serving the student body to the best of my ability. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. There's no further discussion. I'll now entertain a motion to, oh, a motion to have some spontaneous applause. Also, a motion to receive the interim superintendent's report as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the interim superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the School Committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have eight speakers this evening, and we'll begin with our students, Sayree Rivers Garcia and Jedidiah Santana. They'll be followed by Tara Shea and Mike Heishman.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. It's very nice to see you all this evening. My name's Sayree Rivers. I'm a sophomore at Boston Arts Academy. In Boston Public Schools, I learned that in 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue. But as I grew, I learned another truth. In 1492, on Sunday, October 14th, Columbus wrote about the indigenous peoples he met. "I would conquer the whole of them with fifty men and govern them as I pleased," and so he did. In 1493, he wrote, "As soon as I came to the Indies at the first island, I discovered I seized some natives, intending them to inquire and inform me about things in these parts. I still have them with me," he continued. "I discovered many islands inhabited by numerous people. I took possession of all of them for our most fortunate king," and continued in 1495. "Let us in the name of the Holy Trinity go on sending all the slaves that can be sold." Finally, in 1500, he wrote, "The cost of a woman is a hundred calistinos, the same of that as a farm. The trade is very common, and there are now many merchants who go about looking for girls. Some nine or ten are now on sale." who go about looking for girls. Some nine or 10 are now on sale, but whatever their age, they command a good price." Bartolome de las Casas wrote of Columbus, "The admiral was so anxious to please the king that he committed irreparable crimes against the Indians. All atrocious acts reported from primary sources, from his logbooks and letters and the writers of contemporaries." So in 2018, what should we do with these facts? I'm here to talk to you guys about the school calendar, specifically October 8th. Right now on that day, we have no school because of a holiday called Columbus Day. Today, we would like you to consider putting Indigenous Peoples' Day on the Boston Public School calendar instead of Columbus Day. We should learn Columbus because he did create a major turning point in our history. However, just because Columbus is a historical figure doesn't mean he's worth celebrating. After all, is the message we want to send to students in Boston Public Schools that we support slavery and genocide in the name of colonization? I hope not. Since our generation is supposed to be making a positive difference, changing the holiday on our school calendar would be an important way to start. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Boston School Committee. My name is Jedidia Santana, and I am also a sophomore at Boston Arts Academy. As Cyri just said, just because Columbus
is a historical figure, doesn't mean he is worth celebrating. What is worth celebrating, though, is the strength of indigenous people and their contributions and history to our city, a history that goes back to at least 2,500 BCE, according to some sources. In fact, on October 9th last year, our own Boston City Council stated, "The cultures of indigenous peoples of the Americas are worthy of being promoted, that the history is rich, diverse, and worthy of being celebrated, and that the indigenous people, history and contributions have substantially shaped the city of Boston." They resolved to go on the record to say that the second Monday of October henceforth be commemorated as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Boston, and recommends that Indigenous Peoples' Day be observed by the people to reflect upon the ongoing struggle of the indigenous people of this land and to celebrate the thriving culture and value that indigenous peoples add to our city. So right now, both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day are recognized by the Boston City Council. However, in recent years, both the city of Cambridge and the city of Brookline opted to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day and reflected that on their public school calendars. Just two weeks ago, when the mayor of Somerville announced that the city would no longer be recognizing Columbus Day as an official city holiday, he said, "Over the past years, students from the Eastville Somerville Community School wrote letters urging the city to adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day. One asked, 'Why would we want to commemorate someone who slaughtered innocent people?' Instead, we should honor the culture and heritage of indigenous people and recognize the full history of American colonization. We agree and respectfully ask you to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day on the Boston Public School calendar. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tara Shea, and she'll be followed by Michael Heishman and David Nave.
Good evening, Ms. Shea.
My name is Tara Shea. I'm a 20-year resident of the North End, parent of a 7th-grade Boston Latin Academy student. I'm here tonight to tell you about concerns that I and other BLA parents have about the safety of our children riding BPS bus number 435 and 498. The bus is overcrowded, leaving students sitting on the aisle floor or standing in the aisle as they ride the bus on Route 93. On the second day of school, two 7th-grade boys were left at the bus stop at 6:40 in the morning, the bus driver telling them that the bus was too crowded. Last week, it happened again. Two 7th-grade students left behind at school, the bus driver telling the boys that the bus was too crowded and they needed to find another way home. There have also been stories of kids who are standing in the aisles, falling on the floor. One student reportedly cut his head. I have volunteered as a spokesperson for parents of several BLA students, writing emails and phone calls to city officials and BPS staff. I've sent numerous emails to BPS, DeLaverne, Ella McDonough, and others notifying them about the overcrowding and describing the situations I have just mentioned. I've also had several emails and discussions with Lydia Edwards' office. I've also notified the principal of BLA. I have not received response from BPS. Someone from BPS told one mom of a 7th grader that the bus is, quote, "oversubscribed. It's a first-come, first-served basis, and good luck." This is contrary to the official notice from BPS Transportation Department that noted her 7th grader qualified for a seat on the bus. Every morning, as the bus pulls up with nearly every seat occupied from previous stops, I and other parents watch anywhere from 22 to 26 students at the Haymarket bus stop rush the door, pushing and shoving to get on the bus. We've been told the expectation is that the bus driver would check off each student's name as they get on the bus to make sure they are on the list of eligible students. However, this does not seem practical with kids rushing to get a seat on the bus. Similarly, we were told the BLA staff are supposed to get on the bus before departing BLA and confirm only eligible students are on the bus home. However, as noted, this is not a reliable solution. No child to be left behind at a bus stop. No child should have to stand or sit in the aisle on a BPS bus to get to and from school. This simply is not safe. We hope that the school committee has the same requirements and expectations from BPS for safety and reliability. We are requesting another bus be added to this route to safely transport our kids to school. I'm submitting this testimony along with pictures of kids standing on the bus, kids left behind at the bus stop, and other documentation. Thank you for your attention. I just want to add, lately, I ask my daughter, like, how's school going? Who's she sitting with at lunch? And then I ask her, how'd the bus ride go? And she's like, yeah, Mom, it's overcrowded. People are standing. It's becoming the norm for her. And I, while she can handle it, and all these kids can handle it, it's just not safe for these kids to be standing or sitting on the aisle. Thank you very much.
Ms. Shea, Mr. Hanlon will connect with you in the back. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Our next speaker is Michael Heishman, and he'll be followed by David Nave and Reverend Willie Bodrick.
Ms. Perrell, I hope my comments won't be offensive to you. There is nothing that you have done in terms of accepting this position that you should be blamed for. I wish you the best in terms of you getting your dream job. My name is Mike Heishman. I was a teacher in Chelsea for 35 years. I'm still an educator. Been an educational activist for almost 50 years. And it's disheartening to believe that I have more qualifications, more credentials, more experience than the interim superintendent of schools. I think it's insulting to the many administrators who have already retired and the many people here who work in the Boston Public Schools who have far more credentials and far more In the schoolyard news, one of the members of the school committee said, and I hope this is accurate, that whoever is chosen to be able to work with the mayor, he suggested that a phrase along the lines of demonstrated competence working with the city hall might be included in job qualifications. I think that's very, very sad. And I think it's very, very sad because it's very, very true. And I hope that the job description will not say strong preferences will be given to buck kissers. We have a choice in front of us, and I am here today to stand in solidarity with those who say that this school committee and this mayor must say that we are looking to have a very qualified person to be the next Boston superintendent of schools. Credibility. This school committee and this mayor once again does not have much credibility with the community. This process is outrageous. And I also think it's outrageous that the business community, the mainstream media, has been silent. Their silence has been deafening. We must make it clear that these schools, our children, do not belong to the mayor. It's not his schools. It's not his children. It's our schools and our children. And in order for this process to have credibility, you must make it very, very clear. The demand is very, very clear. The current interim superintendent must not be considered. We must have a process, and I believe a process for the first time
30 seconds.
that says that the next superintendent of schools will be the people's choice. The people's choice. And it's the stakeholders. It's the parents. It's the teachers, the community that should be the decision-makers. The mayor should not be the decider. And we should not have a strong preference for people who are going to get along with the mayor. We have to set our sights much higher. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Our next speaker is David Nave, and he'll be followed by Reverend Willie Bodrick.
Good evening.
Chairman, committee, pleasure to meet you all. Acting superintendent. I kind of hear, Ma, I used to start off following the bus because the kids used to throw orange bales, my boys. So I started following the bus. Then they gave me an orange light to put on top of my truck. It was funny. Yeah, you know, it is tough. I know it's tough. It is. But tonight, I'm here to discuss a sad and kind of a mind-blow. I don't think there's one of you that will leave this panel or leave this building without remembering what I'm about to say. I'm not going to get into the dynamics of everything. It's unnecessary. It's not the place and not the time. I'm publicly, though, will start out asking for a meeting with the acting superintendent. It's taken me a year to come to this panel, to sit at this table, because it didn't happen with previous administration. The dynamics that focus around what I'm discussing are more concerning and overwhelming, that it just completely sets me back. I was very engaged, I guess engulfed, with the previous administration, Dr. Johnson. I loved the lady. She had a lot of compassion, a lot of heart, you know? She did her thing, and she had a good team. I met them all and Joe. It was just a lot of fun. I met a lot of great people, and that's how I met Mr. O'Neil. I never got to meet anybody. I haven't been around in so long. But I know the dynamics and policies like the back of my hand. 723 is assault. You see that, and you kind of get concerned why you charging a child with assault that, on his second day of school, which no need to mention schools, asked two students to lower their voice. He couldn't hear. A Spanish teacher. Well, they responded with, "I got you, bro. The slang. It's all fine." Why don't I hit you in the face with my private? And then get up after my son responds and physically assault him. It started the first day of school last year. They chinned him in May. I laughed. I laughed. It threw back a lot of people at BJC that what happened to September, October, November, December, January, February, an entire district could not handle a matter such
20 seconds.
Not talking about the charges or the incident, to make sure that this child was getting an education. End of subject. I would hope somebody could meet me, superintendent, to arrange that meeting, because I've spoken for a year with Ms. Carolyn O'Neil. She finds me to be a joke. It hangs up. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nave.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nave.
If you can just give your name and number to Ms. Roberts in the back, please.
Would they give me a number as well?
If you give your name and number, she'll take that down. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reverend Willie Bodrick. He'll be followed by Joel Wool and Jimmy Wyman.
Good evening. Chairperson LaCanto, to interim superintendent Perrell, to this entire school committee, and even our new student member, Ms. Evelyn Reyes. Well, it was a good evening and a pleasure to be with you all this evening. My name is Reverend Willie Bodrick II, and I serve as the chairperson for the Boston Network for Black Student Achievement. And I am here again, as I was joined and has continued in the community with 12 other civil rights and advocacy groups, to reassure this body of our collective commitments to the three requests that we laid out in our letter on the last school committee meeting as it pertains to this superintendent's search. And we, as the signatories, outlined in our letter that we are hoping on this evening we'll receive a response. To restate those requests for the record, they are as follows. That one, that the mayor and this school committee state publicly that interim superintendent Perrell will not be a candidate for the permanent superintendent position. Two, there will be a firm timeline to be released to the public to ensure that we have a new superintendent in place and time for the 2019 and 2020 school year. And then three, our hope is that we will have a very transparent process as we go about this search committee, and we are having authentic community engagement. We want to ensure that these are our requests and that these requests are being heard and known and responded to by this body. We are pleased to see that the superintendent's search is on the agenda tonight, and we are excited to hear what comes forward at the time. But more importantly, we want to make sure that you understand that we are serious as a collective group, that we are committed to this work, and that we are working collectively to ensure that we are working hard throughout this entire process so that we can get the best superintendent to service each and every one of our children and all the 57,000 of them that are in this district. Our goal is simple, that we want a comprehensive, competent superintendent, transparent process, and we want an inclusive superintendent's search. I thank you again for your time, and I hope to hear great things and responses on this evening. Thank you again.
Thank you, Reverend. Our next speaker is Joel Wool, and he'll be followed by Jimmy Wyman.
Good evening. My name is Joel Wool. I serve as the policy director for Councilor Lydia Edwards, who represents District 1, East Boston Charles on the North End. And I'm submitting a letter today from councilors Edwards, Asabi George, Wu, and Presley regarding a property that has recently become owned by Boston Public Schools, but prior to that, I believe, was owned by BCYF and at times also repaired by the Parks Department. So that facility is the Stillman Center, the tennis courts in Charlestown that are located essentially across from the Charlestown High School. The facility was, previously, if those of you who are familiar with Charlestown, there's previously a bubble over it that had structural problems. The BCYF and Parks were very helpful at getting a contractor to come from New York to take that down. And that was a laborious process. We're grateful to the city for working with the Charlestown community on that. However, we have run into some trouble, unfortunately, since, I think, the transfer of property across city agencies. As is described in the letter, the tennis courts that have been a public parcel have been programmed by a local nonprofit for, actually, for decades. They, it serves members, people in Charlestown, some people not from Charlestown, but the, based on, you know, charging some membership fee to members of the community, they're able to then offer free programming to students, to young people at the BCYF Community Center. So that would be both Charlestown youth as well, if you're familiar with sort of the composition of the school there. There's a lot of students that come over from East Boston into Charlestown. The programming for the tennis center was originally set up by an anti-drug initiative in Charlestown, which is now, I believe, known as Charleston Health and Development, and a new nonprofit has been set up to help program the site. When we understood that there were some, both some physical repairs that needed to happen, we worked to convene a meeting with city staff and we under- happen, we worked to convene a meeting with city staff, and we understood at that time, earlier this year, I would say, middle of the spring, that the parcel was changing ownership to Boston Public Schools. So we're happy to eventually convene a meeting with BPS and some of the Charlestown residents who helped program the site on May 17th. Thank you. I'll try to get through this relatively quickly. We've been asking for clarity on that site, Councilor Edwards, as well as residents of Charlestown, for months. We didn't receive a response from the administration or from BPS until 12:30 today. Again, we had met in the middle of May. The group is trying, the group that programs the site wants to raise money that is not in the Boston Public Schools budget to help repair the site so that everyone, including people who are, you know, youth in the area, can continue to be served by recreational programs.
Mr. Wool, thank you.
Momentarily, I'll conclude. We're asking BPS to change the decision that we received at 12:30 today, which was that they are not, that BPS is not willing to continue partnership with the Charlestown community on this issue. We appreciate a response on this matter to the City Council and the councilors who have signed it by the end of the week, and thank you very much for taking some time. And I apologize for running a few minutes over.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jimmy Wyman.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Wyman. I'm a parent of K-1 student, and I'm just here to learn more about the issue with the buses that are going on. My son is scheduled to take the bus, and he, his bus has never arrived on time to the school, and it's ranged from 10 minutes to over an hour being late. And I do want to say, the people at Transportation that I've been talking to have been very helpful. Ms. Beck, in particular, has been very responsive in helping me figure it out. However, the situation is not getting resolved. And I just want to go through, as we were talking about today, 30 minutes has been the average when I talked to his teacher today. She said it's 30 minutes, so they miss morning circle, they miss breakfast, she gives them breakfast. But if we're doing 30 minutes, and we do the math, times 15 days, that's 450 minutes. He's missed seven and a half hours of school in 15 days. And actually, that's probably a matter of seven days, because we've taken him the first week, and when the bus doesn't show up, we also take him. And so my questions are wondering, it continues to be an issue? I was told that he would be on a new bus today. When I opened the app, it was a new bus scheduled, but not on our route. I called Transportation, and they told me they would call the bus yard. I waited on hold, and she came back and said they weren't able to get in touch with the bus yard because the radio was broken. Meanwhile, I walked my son to, as I'm walking my son to the train, the bus that he was supposed to be on comes rolling past at about 8 o'clock. I carry him, I run him down. That bus driver does not know he's not supposed to be on that route, or does not know that there's a new route scheduled. So systemic in terms of communication and in terms of what's going to be done to get him there on time, and so I would just ask for us to think creatively, actively, problem-solve, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help with the situation. But I also know, I don't know if it's a route issue, I don't know if it's a, he's been getting picked up on time. The first week wasn't, but he was, the other day, he was picked up five minutes early and still 15 minutes late. Six stops that it has, four students in K-1 that aren't coming late, so.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. And Dell Stanislas, our interim director of Transportation, and Shonda Williams are in the back, and they'll speak with you now. Thank you, and I'm sorry for your inconvenience.
Mr. Lecanto, that concludes our speakers' republic comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is the consent calendar, which consists of grants for approval totaling $7,750,943. A bill due in the amount of $7,730 for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' annual membership dues, and another bill due in the amount of $44,428 for annual membership dues in the Council of Great City Schools. I'll open it up now to questions and discussions from the committee. Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you. I just had a question on the SCL grant.
Yes.
And I wanted to understand better, I'm very excited that Boston After School &amp; Beyond, who's a leader in out-of-school time, is working on this, but I wanted to understand a little bit better in terms of how the work actually happens with out-of-school time, because it just says here, there's just a menu. Does that mean that's only a menu for summer programming? Are the schools working with the partners all year round? What does that look like?
Bennett Griesmer, the manager of Grants and External Funding. So the program manager for this grant couldn't be here tonight, so I will take that question back to them as well. And just as a quick note, this is the second year of that grant out of four, so I can also inquire about how it was run last year.
Yes, that would be great. Yep.
And Bennett, just to clarify, this is the Wallace-Passelli Grant.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. We can bring back a more full report on that in the subsequent meeting. Thank you, Bennett.
Any other questions, we're happy to answer.
And as a reminder, I believe this was a competitive grant, correct? That we had to apply for, and we're competing against a number of other districts. It's a four-year grant?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Any other questions?
Nope. I would just like more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Mr. O'Neill.
Not a question, just a comment. I do note that you included in it, Mr. Chair, dues for Mass Association of School Committees, which I think we all use, particularly for their training around open meeting law, ethics. And they've been a tremendous resource to the Chair in providing advice and making sure we stay on track with open meeting law and everything, so I think they're a very valuable organization. Many of us have attended their November training or the November conference. And also, I do want to note for the record that I am an officer of the Board of the Council of Great City Schools, representing Boston, so I'm Secretary of Treasury this year. It is an unpaid position. There is nothing in it for me. I do not believe from legal counsel that I need to recuse myself from the vote because I am a volunteer for the organization, but I do need to state for the record that I'm an officer of that organization. And I know in the report for all of us is the annual report from the Council of Great City Schools that shows a $347 return to Boston for every $1 we pay in dues, particularly for the lobbying that they do for us at the DC level. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you for noting that, Mr. O'Neill. Are there any other questions or discussion on the consent calendar? We're hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. That sounds like a second from Dr. Yuriarte. Is there any discussion or objection? Any objection to approving the consent calendar by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries. Excuse me, the consent calendar is approved. Our next action item now before us is a memorandum of understanding between the Boston Public Schools and the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. As you recall, at our last meeting, EMK Headmaster Dr. Karen Walker Gregory presented a five-year renewal for the committee's consideration. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our interim superintendent for any final comments.
We have no final comments unless there are questions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Perrell. I did want to note, before I do open it up to members for questions and discussion, there was an issue raised at the last meeting by Mr. O'Neill with respect to the Code of Conduct provisions in the MOU. That was Section 10, Page 11. And in the interim period here, the district, the committee, and the school have conferred and an amendment, as you can view in the MOU that you have before you, has been made to clearly state that the school will adopt and follow the BPS Code of Conduct. So I want to thank once again Mr. O'Neill for his eagle eye in raising that issue and reminding us of the question that we ask with each autonomous school, whether it be a pilot school, an innovation school, or a Horace Man charter that comes before us for approval of their memoranda with the district. Are there any other questions on the MOU that's before us?
Repeat the section? I'm sorry.
I believe it was Section 10. I was going from memory. I might be a few pages off, but I believe it's a-
So Section 10 on Page 8, Section 10(c) on Page 8 refers to student discipline, and that is still saying may adopt its own policies. So it says, "EMK may adopt the BPS Code of Conduct and/or may adopt its own policies pertaining to the conduct of students." Right, so I'm just wondering if we have the most recent version.
Rob, yeah. Rob, do you want to come up and speak to that? While he's coming up, when Headmaster Karen Walker Gregory was here, she did confirm that they do conform to and follow the BPS Code of Conduct, but I would agree that it should be so reflected, and I believe that was the intent in discussion. Rob?
That's right. There is another MOU that was sent that has the language saying that we'll adopt the Code of Conduct, so if we can just take maybe just a brief recess, I'll get that, since apparently you guys don't have it, I'll get you that information right now. Or if you move on to another matter, I can make sure you get that.
Well, Mr. Goncalvo, we have two other items to vote on this evening, so why don't we move on to those items?
And I'll have it before the end of the hour.
And we'll come back to it with the language. I will state for the committee that we have had written correspondence today confirming that this change has been made, and I've seen the language myself, and so the change has been made, and I apologize for not double-checking the materials in the packet to ensure that that change-
I will reprint out the copy of the memo and hand deliver it to each of you.
So I'll table this-
Yeah, and our apologies as well.
So Jim, may I just simply suggest that I'm glad to make the motion approved as amended, including language reflecting that the Code of Conduct is BPS Code of Conduct? If that's acceptable, it's everybody, you have to stay on agenda.
I can actually, Karen's going to bring over her computer, and we're going to just read the language so you have it for the public record of what was changed in the MOU. Thank you. So on Page 8, at the top of the page, Section c, it says, "Student Discipline. EMK certifies and acknowledges that it has read and reviewed the BPS Code of Conduct." The new amended language reads, "EMK shall adopt and will comply with the BPS Code of Conduct."
Thank you, Mr. Goncalvo. Are there further questions, Mr. O'Neill? Okay. Dr. Yuriarte.
I just wanted to ask Superintendent Perrell about the accountability issues on this school. It's a Level 2 school. Can you tell us whether that is maintained on this new accountability year?
I cannot, until tomorrow.
Well, but we're being asked, you know, because in some other agreements, we've had sort of caveats about what happens if there's a decline in the performance, and we don't have in this one.
Well, Dr. Yuriarte, I think you might be referring to the recent agreement that we extended with the Dearborn over the summer, which-
I know it's a different situation, but what I'm saying is, I mean, it-
Well, in that situation, it was in the face of declining performance that had been demonstrated over a period of time with respect to the accountability numbers that we were receiving back, and that's never been the case with respect to the EMK.
Okay. Can we get a little note about what-
The other thing I just need to point out, thank you, so the Edward M. Kennedy as a Horace Man is not yet calculated in the accountability, so even if there wasn't an embargo, we are not provided with that yet. So we were only provided, so as a Horace Man, it is technically an independent district. We can request that from them, but they are, that packet of information is not included in the regular BPS schools, at least in the initial release of data.
Initial release, okay.
So we can certainly access that for you. We can get that back to you however you would like it, but they're not in any case. It's embargoed, but-
It's a done deal after tonight, you know what I mean? So it's not a, just, it's good information to have, I think, as we consider these agreements.
Yeah, no, we're happy to provide that.
Understood. Thank you. Ms. Reyes.
Yeah, so on Page 5, I was looking at C, which talks about sort of the IEP plans for students, and I was wondering how, I mean, I know it's a district-wide policy that parents and teachers and people come together to talk about IEPs and how that will look for each student, but I'm just wondering if that's different for EMK versus other BPS schools, and how that affects student push-out.
Well, do we have someone that might be able to speak to that, Ms. Perrell?
Cindy, is that something that you're prepared to come and speak to? What page again? And I can provide it.
Page 5, Section c. Page 5.
Yep. Section 5(c).
Hi.
Good evening, Ms. Nielsen.
I'm Cindy Nielsen, hi. So we're getting special education with Horace Man charters. They are their own LEA, but they're also part of Boston Public Schools, so they have their own-
So they are their own local education authority, so they're like an independent district?
But they're really, they're heavily partnered with us. So they have their admission policies that they work through, but with that, they are, so they develop their own programming for the students that they receive. Regarding like technical assistance, or if we can be of support with resources that we have because we are a larger part of the district, we're definitely there to help support them as well, so.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one more. On Page 7, under governance structure, I'm curious, I see that there's a Board of Trustees that is independent from the school committee, and I'm wondering if there are students on that board or students anywhere within their governance structure.
Do we have anyone that might be able to speak to that as well?
I think that's, I'm looking at the folks who worked on the MOU, and it does not look like we know the answer to that, so it's an excellent question, and we can get that for you.
I will add that one of the questions that we ask of every school leader that comes before us is what kind of student governance participation they have. So it's a different question than what you're asking, but certainly, we ask whether there's a BSAC rep in addition to a number of other representatives of citywide governance within the district, and so there is a presence within that school, and that's one of the things that we do try to assure our constituents of every time a school leader does come in front of us, but at the same time, we don't have the ability to dictate to, again, an LEA, an independent education authority, how they might form their Board of Trustees. Nevertheless, I don't want to presuppose anything. I'm fairly certain that there is local leadership that includes student representatives. Great questions. Welcome to the committee. Anything further? We can continue this. Any other questions from the committee before we entertain a motion to approve the MOU as presented?
As verbally presented.
And as amended, yes. And so now, thank you, Ms. O'Neill. I will return to request a motion to approve the MOU as presented with the verbal amendment that's been presented at the request of Mr. O'Neill and read to us into the record by Mr. Goncalvo. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Yuriarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Lecanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is the Student Activity Accounts Policy, which was presented at our last meeting by Chief Financial Officer Eleanor Lawrence, as well as Business Manager Ed Glora, and a number of other representatives from the Central Office. The Student Activity Accounts Policy was presented for the committee's consideration, and it was designed to ensure that sound fiscal stewardship of funds that are dedicated to the benefit of students are preserved in our daily course of business. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments. Perrell?
So I've asked Eleanor Lawrence, our Chief Financial Officer, to come up to the table to answer specific questions, some of which were submitted in advance, and so we can move right into questions. I will say that we have continued to do the rollout of the implementation and support to school leaders in using student activity accounts, and both Ed Glora, the Business Manager, and Eleanor Lawrence are continuing to track and respond to individual requests or problems as presented. So far, they've been fairly effective at finding solutions within the new system that still empower schools to make all the purchases that they may need, but look forward to your questions, and we'll- that they may need, but look forward to your questions, and we'll answer them as best we can.
Well, thank you, Ms. Peril. I'll open it up now to questions and discussion from the committee. Ms. Robinson?
Just have a quick one. Since the beginning of the school year, have there been instances where schools have had to begin to use the new policy? And just wondering how that is working, given the number of questions and the nuances that we've gotten.
Yes, in fact, we began rolling out the new system over the course of last school year, and at the, as of the first day of school this year, all of our schools are on the new system and using it.
And have there been any concerns or-
We've certainly gotten some inquiries and requests for assistance from schools, and as the superintendent just stated, I believe we've been able to navigate all of the requests so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neill?
I just want to state that I think this work is critically important. It's a small, relatively small dollar amount compared to our total budget, but these are parents and students and community members' money into our schools, and they demand and expect transparency and that it's being spent correctly. And this is important that it's done right. I do appreciate how hard it is to do an effort district-wide, and how hard it is to do rules, and then think about the exceptions, as we have had raised to us by school members last week. I do appreciate, Ms. Lawrence, your answer to the questions that were raised, and I know you were verbally saying to us that your team is committed to working with not only the school leaders, but the school secretaries, many of whom this falls on their shoulders to make happen, club leaders, coaches, clubs, etc. So I deeply appreciate your willingness to work with them and get them through this transition. I do believe this is important work, and ultimately, this is an area that needs to be tightened up, because ultimately, this is about transparency to our parents and our students and our community members that are putting money into these programs. But I thank you for the answers to the questions to what was raised, and I really appreciate your commitment verbally last week, and I'm sure you'd say it again if we asked right now, to work with the groups to get them to the point. There's going to be a bumpiness on this. There's no question about it. Implementing something like this is tough, but once you get a bus vendor set up once, it's a pain in the neck to have happen, but next time it becomes easier, and so on and so forth. So I appreciate your verbal commitment from your team to work through with the schools on this.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill, and yes, I can certainly recommit to working with schools to make sure we make this as easy as it can be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yep, thank you. I agree with Mr. O'Neill. I think it's important that we do this, and it is our students' and family money. I'm sorry if you answered this before, I apologize, but I am totally blanking out. Is there a process for students and families to be involved in terms of knowing what is in the accounts, how it's being spent, just so we can be more transparent? And if you answered that before, I apologize, I just don't remember.
That's a good question. In fact, I don't think it was asked. We are able to easily generate reports from our PeopleSoft financial system to give anyone who inquired a report on how the funds were used. We could see if there is interest in downloading those once a year and putting them on the website or something like that.
That would be great, even if we could download it once a year, so families and students could look at it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Dr. Ariarte?
I just wanted to thank you for going over one by one all the questions that was raised, whether we're raising that letter. So thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Ariarte. And Ms. Lawrence, you know, thank you again for being so responsive to the committee, and especially to the members of the public and school communities, both you and Mr. Glora, listening to concerns and integrating that into the way that not only you put the policy together, but how you're going to implement that over time. You know, the policy may remain static once we adopt it, but certainly the way that you choose to implement certain aspects of the policy can change according to how folks are finding their way around working with it. So we appreciate, again, your flexibility and your hard work on this. This is good work to keep sound fiscal practices in the district, and that's what we're all about here. So if there's nothing further from my fellow colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Student Accounts Activity, excuse me, Student Activity Accounts Policy as presented. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Ariarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our final action item this evening, excuse me, is a charge in membership for the committee's Internal Audit Task Force. You will recall that at our last meeting, Mr. O'Neill, who has been leading this effort on behalf of the committee, presented for a charge in a membership roster, excuse me, presented a charge in a membership roster for the committee's consideration. He was joined by Scott Baranowski, a member of the firm Wolfen Company, who has been proposed to serve as a co-chair of the task force, along with Liz Goncalves, excuse me, Judy Goncalves, a senior vice president at Liberty Mutual. I'd like to turn it over now to Mr. O'Neill and ask him to briefly review the modifications that have been made to the membership roster. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did present the proposed task force last week, and the charge remains the same that we discussed last week and had actually discussed in December. The proposed membership has had three slight changes from what you have seen last week, two major, one minor. So the minor is Dr. Gray, the professor at Bentley, who last week was on the forum as tentative, has now confirmed her availability beyond this. So this is a professor of accounting and internal audit at Bentley University, one of the top accounting universities in the region, will, has agreed to serve in the task force. Also last week, or the week before, I had presented Ms. Sharia Wade, who was at State Street, was a BLA grad, a Posse Scholar, and was a rising star at State Street. Unfortunately, she falls under the office of CEO, and because her immediate supervisor is on the Board of City Year, their Ethics and Compliance Office thought it may be perceived as a conflict of interest, and in the office of CEO, they take a much tighter look at that than they would if she was in another part of the organization. So she had to respectfully bow out. We thank Ms. Wade for her interest in serving on it, and she obviously would have been an outstanding member. But what I deeply appreciate is what Ms. Wade does was propose someone to take her spot, and it is another rising star at State Street. Interestingly enough, also a member of Ms. Wade's class at Boston Latin Academy, the year 2006, and her name and resume is on the back of the list. Her name is Ms. Natalia, Natalie Velasquez. Ms. Velasquez graduated from College of Holy Cross in 2010 with a Bachelor of Arts, with a concentrations in Spanish and Latin American Studies. As I said, she was also a BLA grad. She then worked in banking and in several nonprofits, in HR positions, before moving back to State Street full-time, including, by the way, in Madrid, Spain for a year, before she moved back to State Street, where she had done internships in, and has now been in a variety of roles. She served in a rotational role to move throughout the company. Then she worked on implementing the anti-money laundering program across a variety of business lines, and now her title is Product Owner Enterprise Data Governance and Management at State Street, so there's quite a mouthful, and is working on implementing a new data management program across a bunch of business lines. The reason why we feel that this adds relevance to the committee is we already have a number of internal audit professionals on there, but a good part of trying to figure out how this is going to work is how to actually get internal audit up and running within BPS with two, three folks that are planned in the budget. And so someone like Ms. Velasquez, who has deep experience in trying to integrate something new across a range of business lines and building acceptance and culture, these are issues that were critically important to her, and she felt she could add value to. So we're always delighted when we find a former graduate and is interested in doing it. We also had said last week, it was, or two weeks ago, it was pointed out to us that we had hoped to have a student, a former BPS student on it, a college graduate, a college student who was currently studying accounting or finance. And in fact, Ms. Wade was also, through the National Association of Black MBAs, she was able to identify a student for us, Jonathan Mitchell Joint. Mr. Joint is a graduate of New Mission High School. Before that, he was a graduate of the Rogers School in Hyde Park, and before that, a graduate of the Channing School in Hyde Park. So Hyde Park all along, originally born in Haiti, moved to Miami, then moved to New York, but moved to us at elementary school, and has been, still a resident of Hyde Park, but has graduated from elementary, middle, and high school. Is now a student at Boston College, studying finance, does mentoring, again, extremely engaged by this opportunity. Also, by the way, speaks English, Haitian Creole, and smattering of French. He wants to improve his French, he told me. So, again, brings a lot to the table, being a very recent graduate of our district, and, you know, with more knowledge of what's going on in our schools on a day-to-day basis. So, again, Dr. Gray is now confirmed, and in addition to what we had presented last week, we present Mr. Jonathan Joint and Ms. Natalie Velasquez as a replacement for Ms. Sharia Wade.
Well, thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Thank you again for your hard work on putting this task force together. Before I open it up to members for questions or comments, I do want to give an opportunity to the interim superintendent to give any final comments.
I would just say that we, I, and we particularly Eleanor Lawrence, the Chief Financial Officer, we welcome the arrival of an audit committee and task force. We think it's good business and good, let me rephrase that, it's a good thoughtful way to make sure that we are maximizing the resources and efficiency of our finances. So we look forward to, and Eleanor will be the point person to coordinate with the task force, in addition to myself. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do refresh for the committee's member, the charge is to come back to us, hopefully by end of year, with a recommended policy around internal audit, including reporting lines of responsibility. Should they report to the chair, should they report to the superintendent, et cetera. Second of all, a sample audit plan that could be looked at in the first year. And third of all, characteristics we would look for for Chief of Internal Audit in light of the recommended policy. So they would come back to, similar to our other task force, they would come back to us with recommendations, and they look to get started shortly, and would look to be back to us, hopefully by end of year, or the beginning of next year.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Dr. Ariarte?
Just short, I just wanted to thank Mr. O'Neill for his effort to really make this a very diverse group, and I know that he has worked hard to try to identify just the right people, so I just wanted to, you know, thank him.
Thank you, Dr. Ariarte. Thank you. You know, we have a lot of qualified people out there, and so it's great to see-
I think we talked to every single one.
But it's great to see people stepping up and willing, so willing to help. And I was really struck when I spoke to Ms. Velasquez today, who said to me, yesterday, and she said, "Boston Latin Academy set me up to succeed in college and succeed in my career, and I'll do anything I can to help the district that put me in that position." And that was really cool to hear.
And I find it, you know, incredibly important that, you know, Mr. O'Neill, of course, is a graduate of the district, but we have three other graduates, well, two other graduates of the district that are on the committee, one other one that had to step aside, or, excuse me, on the proposed task force. And that's just a wonderful example of the good work that happens in our district, not only in schools like BLA, but, you know, Mr. Joint coming out of New Mission, one of our up-and-coming schools at the time of his graduation as well, speaks to the breadth and the depth of the college preparatory experience that we have in the district, and is setting us up well for the future. Ms. Reyes?
Yeah, so just for clarification, this task force would function to monitor internal audits and be transparent with students and parents about what's going on behind the scenes?
So, yes, Ms. Reyes, let me step back for one second, since you're new to the role. The first charge for this task force is to develop, we do not have an internal audit function in Boston Public Schools right now, and we are a dependent district, we are part of the city of Boston, so we fall under the city of Boston financial control, including their city auditor. But because we have a billion-one budget, it's best practice for us to have an internal audit department looking at our district. So the first role of this task force is to actually develop a policy for us. What should internal audit look like? What are reporting lines of responsibility? What are the type of things they're going to be looking at? The second thing is to develop a sample audit plan, so this is what internal audit would look like, or would be looking at in the first year. And then the third is to provide a set of qualifications that we would look at for an internal auditor for the district. The thought process is they will come back to us in December, January timeframe with the results of their recommendation. We would vote on it as a matter of policy. Then, once that's done, and the district then looks to hire an internal auditor and start that function, this task force would most likely then flip to a monitoring and advisory role, where they may meet two to three times a year with the chief auditor to review the results of the audits, and kind of be our eyes and ears, and make a recommendation back to us on his internal audit operating properly. So, similar to other task forces that we've had, English Language Learners, Inclusion, Opportunity Gap, Assignment Plan, we ask task force, we form them to help, even on the Code of Conduct, we form them to advise us about a policy, and then after we implement it, then to kind of continue in a ongoing monitoring role. Is that helpful for the background?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, excuse me, Chair, but yes, the ultimate goal is for folks to have, for us to be more comfortable that we're spending the taxpayer dollars wisely, efficiently, effectively, and that helps build transparency and trust with the parents, with the teachers, with the staff, with the students, with the community, and with us.
Thank you again, Ms. O'Neill. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Are there any other questions or discussion from the committee?
If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the charge and the membership of the Internal Audit Task Force as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. This looks like a second from Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Ariarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And I just want to note again, on behalf of the committee, our thanks to our colleague, Mr. O'Neill, who began this journey when he was still in the chairman's role in last December, with putting forward a sample policy and a proposal for the task force, and has carried it through over a number of months, again, recruiting specifically the, a number of members with lineage within the BPS, and also casting a far and wide net to ensure that we had a nuanced set of representatives on the committee that represent a wide cross-section of auditing professionals within the community. I also want to thank, once again, Ms. Lawrence and her colleagues as well, for welcoming in this task force and demonstrating a lot of eagerness to get to work on this task. And so we look forward, again, to hearing from the task force in the coming months, and taking further action at a future meeting. Well, moving on now, we're going to move on to the reports for this evening, and we're going to switch up the order, if my fellow members will permit me, this evening. We had the Build BPS Community Engagement Update going first this evening, but the district requested to switch the order of presentations to begin with an update on the Central Office Reorganization and Learning Networks for School Year 2018-2019 presentation. So at this time, I'd like to invite Associate Superintendent for Elementary and Middle Schools, Mary Driscoll, to please step forward with her presentation. And before we do that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Laura Peril for opening comments.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto. So I'm actually pleased tonight to welcome three individuals to join the table and join me in this presentation and discussion. These folks' roles and titles have been modified in recent months for purposes of clarifying or elevating their role within the BPS Central Office. Each have substantial portfolios of work, and they will be speaking with us tonight about those, about how those portfolios are in fact reflective of the critical work that we, as an organization, will be doing to advance the goals and objectives that have been established by the school committee, and that we are committed to fulfilling on behalf of our students. So, Mary Driscoll, you already mentioned, who previously served as a longtime school leader in Boston, followed by Instructional Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, and is now our Associate Superintendent for Elementary and Middle Schools, a key position within our Office of School Support. That means that she oversees all of the- That means that she oversees all of the schools serving grades pre-K through eight, and supports the academic superintendents within the elementary and middle school division who provide direct support and supervision to all of the school leaders. Second is Dr. Charles Grandson, who began his career as well as an educator, as a teacher within BPS, and is now our interim chief academic officer overseeing what is, continues to be known as the asset division, but is the teaching and learning division that encompasses academics and professional learning, social emotional learning, our opportunity gaps office, as well as our English learner office and our special education department. So, all of those that are deeply focused on our teaching and learning priorities, professional learning, and our support for our most vulnerable learners. And last is David Murphy, who has served for several years as the district's lead labor counsel in collective bargaining negotiations, who has recently joined my office as the deputy superintendent for administration, focusing on the internal management and organizational effectiveness of the central office itself. So our presentation tonight is going to be in three parts. The first is the articulation of three key priorities that the district's leadership team has committed to advancing over the course of the 2018-19 school year. These were developed in collaboration with my initial priorities and then the results of some of the listening work and the central office conversations, as well as the school leader sessions. However, it's also important to point out that these priorities build on much of the prior work, as well as the charge that the school committee provided to me upon appointing me to this position. And I will come back to that. The second will be, actually, let me stay on that for a moment. And in light of that, the priorities that you may recall are focused on continuing the district's focus on closing opportunity and achievement gaps, also reflecting the important and ongoing work relative to supporting and implementing culturally and linguistically and linguistically sustaining practices throughout our teaching and learning, and then specifically supporting the ongoing focus on social emotional learning as a corollary to the academic work and really as an intertwined element of our teaching and learning throughout the district. And in addition to that, we also took a step back to look at some of the historic strategic work that had been done in various iterations of the theory of action, the strategic implementation plan, to ensure that we were staying most, you know, aligned, but yet reflecting the current work of the district through the work of the leadership team, as well as the listening tours. So I think I am going to stop there. The twin part to the priorities are the enabling conditions, so this is more reflective of the way in which the leadership team has, in collaboration with me, has carved out how we will execute and implement the work. And then the second, and I think very important part of the conversation, is how central office is structuring itself around school support, into school support learning networks. This is work that was emerging last spring as, in response to how does central office more effectively support lower-performing schools in particular, and strategies for differentiating support across schools. It was mostly on paper, but partially implemented this summer when we convened as a leadership team, and in my role as interim, it seemed like good and thoughtful work that was underway that reflects the, the lens that I bring to this, which is that the role of central office is to serve as a central support for school improvement and to meet schools where they are in terms of providing that support. So with that alignment, we continue to push through the implementation of that, which is being implemented for this school year. So, Mary Driscoll and Dr. Charles Grandson will speak to that in particular. So I'm going to start with the priorities and then turn it over to Dave to talk about the enabling conditions. And so, on the slide, I will say, while keeping it simple into the three priorities, there's obviously a lot that is buried inside of these in terms of how we execute the work. But I think first and foremost, the priority is to continue to improve opportunities for students. And by this, we mean to establish, focus on establishing the systemic conditions necessary to improve opportunities for students in order to narrow and continue to narrow achievement gaps in all BPS schools. So I think this is a longstanding and high priority focus of the Boston Public Schools that is where we will continue to focus our work. The second priority, as mentioned, and will come forward when we outline the school support learning networks, is to differentiate school supports. And by this, we mean to, really, two things. One is to position central office to enable rapid and sustainable improvement to teaching and learning in all schools, while also prioritizing supports to lower-performing schools. And so this is this notion of differentiating support, but yet reflecting that teaching and learning is the core business of the Boston Public Schools across all of our schools, and that central office in collaboration with school leaders are the deliverers of that support. And then the third priority, under the rubric of Plan for the Future, again, in keeping with the charge that the school committee laid out to me, is to align the long-term planning of Build BPS investments in new and improved facilities with decisions that relate to grade configurations, as well as program placement and the minimization of transitions for students. And I think particularly around program placements, but really in all of these and across all of this work, is the equity lens that we all bring to this work, to ensure that we are positioning the Boston Public Schools and supporting all of our individual schools to best meet, best meet the learning needs of our students, but also supporting them in their aspirations as they continue on their K-12 pathway and beyond. So those are the overarching priorities, and now I think I will, I'd like to turn things over to Dave Murphy, who will speak to the enabling conditions, again, a product of discussion with the executive leadership team around the ways in which we must work together and collaborate with schools in order to deliver on these priorities. Dave?
Thank you, Superintendent. The superintendent referenced in her comments the process by which we have gone through in recent weeks and months in developing the articulation of these priorities. As she mentioned, the information that was synthesized and analyzed came from a lot of the goal-setting and the strategic planning work that has occurred, both with the school committee and throughout the administration and the organization as a whole in recent years. And we see the development of these priorities, and both in their conceptual form and in the articulation of them, as a continuation of the values and priorities that the, the school committee has charged the superintendent with executing during her time as the leader of the school district. The priorities during, during that process and during that, that deliberative process, there was a lot of thought went into both how these priorities would be articulated, and also, to some degree, in the order in which they would be articulated. And you'll note that in priority one, we talk about the need to develop and cultivate the systemic conditions on which we can continue to make progress and to serve the interests of the students of the Boston Public Schools. And so on this slide before you now are the eight enabling conditions that we've identified that we believe will not only allow us to advance the priorities of the 18-19 school year, but also to establish an environment and conditions in which the district can continue to make progress and to make decisions that are in the interests of those students. So, I will, I will not subject you to me reading the entire slide to you, but I would just say that everything from the, the focus on equity and the focus on teaching and learning as the core business, the idea that as we make these decisions, we need to operate with a sense of urgency and to not be dissuaded from taking on some of the more difficult challenges and tasks that the district is facing during this time in its history, all of that is encompassed in this articulation of those enabling conditions. And we believe that they fit well and are consistent with the priorities as, as the superintendent has articulated them tonight, and in response to the charge that she's been given as the leader of the district.
So, moving on, we'll just talk a little bit about the team, and then I want to reserve the bulk of the time for talking about the school support and learning networks, because it is a significant shift, but really a continuation of this work to find better ways to support all schools, but also support the schools with significant need. So this next slide is very, very tiny, but hopefully by dint of the handouts, will be easier to follow along. And I just want to point out two important parts, because it also relates to the next conversation about the learning networks. So on the right side of this slide are the, we have outlined the leaders of each of the, these are all of the academic superintendents in that first box that support both at the elementary and middle level and then at the secondary school learning level. They each are assigned a particular network. As you, as we go through the presentation, you will see that some of these networks are larger and some are smaller. That has to do with the levels of need in those schools. And then, at the high school level, they are also split into three networks. Equally important and below them, for some time now, Boston has organized itself around academic superintendents, who are the supervisors of all the principals, who provide direct support particularly around teaching and learning, program content in the new network act as sort of facilitators and air traffic control people relative to the individual supports that come into schools. But an incredibly important resource inside this district are the operational superintendents, who are listed in the box below. They are split, one for high schools and three split across all of the elementary and K-8, and I'm not sure how many of them are in the room tonight. But these individuals work tirelessly and are deeply knowledgeable about the operations and logistics in our schools, and so they are, they also are an important bolster to the support to schools. On the right side is the executive leadership team, which inside of BPS has been known as the executive cabinet. And you see three members in front of you. A number of these names are quite familiar, and I think almost in all cases, all of these positions, including some of the, these three in front of you with recent promotions, also Monica Roberts, whose role has been elevated to that of chief engagement officer, were all staff members already inside the district, sometimes in different roles, who represent some incredible talent that is already here in this district, and thus have reorganized around this leadership team. Below that is the box that represents our pending and, and new search processes for individuals that we are recruiting into positions inside the district. And I think in several conversations, we are eager to reach out to our community, our partners, the expertise on this panel, to recruit a diverse set of qualified candidates for all of these. You will see the areas span everything from communications to high schools to SEL. And so, we are eager to move into the active stage of those searches, and will certainly share those broadly. But this is the, the, both the current team and the available positions that we are recruiting for. So before I shift to the school support, oh, one more slide, sorry. You can see this now laid out in more of a traditional org chart. I will, now I will stop here in order for you to ask any questions here before we shift over to the school support networks. If this is the, this is the people's side of it, and as we move to the schools, you'll see the school organization strategy as well.
Well, thank you, Ms. Peril. Open it up now to the committee for questions and discussion.
So on the enabling conditions slide, all of it makes a lot of sense. The one thing that is not readily apparent to me exactly what's meant is when you say confront longstanding obstacles that impede progress on behalf of students. We got thumbnail on what those longstanding obstacles are, some precision there? Because others all indicate something to me, but that seems less clear.
I think one of, one of the observations, I think, of the leadership team is that this is expressing a desire of, when we are encountering a challenging problem, to really look at driving hard-to solutions. And sometimes that may mean doing things differently. So it's more a culture of problem-solving and being willing to go after challenging issues. So I think, for example, when we look at tackling the high school issue at a very broad level, which is work that fits underneath the second priority of really digging deeply into how we support lower-performing schools. I think we know from the Parthenon Report and from many other sources that there are a lot of challenges at our high schools. One of them would be open enrollment and program placement as an equity issue in terms of meeting the needs of particularly our English learners and students with disabilities. Those are patterns of enrollment and program placement. There is an opportunity to look at, as an example, those students are heavily concentrated in a small number of our lowest-performing schools through sort of patterns of assignment and program placement over many, many years. Taking a close look at whether or not there is another way to do that. Can we approach that? That would be an example of sort of longstanding challenges that would be approached.
Just to help me understand, is that, so that sounds to me like a longstanding problem of practice. What would be the obstacle to solving? Just based on the words, one thing to see the problems of practice, which we, versus, what are the obstacles? You know, it sounds like there's a theory of obstacles, existing obstacles, that that's different than a problem practice. Am I making-
And I'll welcome anyone to join in, but it, using that, just sticking with that example, so there are obstacles in terms of past practice of schools, there's obstacles in terms of whether or not we have the physical space in the right locations to meet the needs of those students. And then they, it also involves enrollment patterns, in some cases, admissions policies. There are a lot of things that you might conceivably have to figure out a solution to that respects the needs of, of all players and balances the needs of our most vulnerable learners.
Thank you.
So as we go through, I guess I would, that's an area that I would like constant, explicit reports upon, because, you know, sunlight's the best disinfectant, right? So part of that is coming to us. What are the, what are the problems of practice that are being confronted? What are the obstacles being seen and how those articulated here so that we can use our resources to help drive some change?
Great.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, Ms. Robinson.
Yes, it's sort of more of an observation, again, under the enabling conditions. It really, really coalesces together. This is really the issues around the adults in the district. And so my question is, in addition to the superintendents, et cetera, where does the union sit as you look at this list? And how do you begin to help the adults, the teachers, et cetera, begin to think about what are their practices and what they are and aren't doing that in the end impact the abilities of our students to be successful?
Do you want me to, okay.
Please.
I thought you were going to add on to that question, but that's a good one already. Thank you.
I was going to start to answer it, but-
I'd say a couple of things. I think there, the way adults organize themselves to support our students is important, but I would not restrict this to our bargaining partners and our unions at all, whether, whether union or non-union, bargaining or non-bargaining, central office- Whether, whether union or non-union, bargaining or non-bargaining, central office, frontline educators, I think the challenge is to all of us is to step up and organize ourselves to maximize support and effectiveness on behalf of our students. I would, there is enormous partnership in the way that we work with our bargaining units. We have 12 of them. They are part of the lifeblood and delivery of the work we do. So, I would not at all label this into one particular group of adults, but really the collective. And I would say actually driven particularly initially around what I have been hearing, not just initially from school leaders, but as the conversations move out to teachers, to community members, this conversation of how do we maximize the support that central office provides to schools? How do we balance the compliance function of central office with the support function? And so, it really was focused on that.
And I would build on that just by saying that, you know, we've really been informed by the work of Michael Fulon and Wright Drivers and the idea that building capacity is way more important than the idea of the superstar principal that does it all. That, that's not a realistic idea. And so, a lot of our work with school leaders has been around building their capacity to create strong teams of teachers.
Dr. Yurarte, thank you, Ms. Robinson.
I was really happy to see the, the content of the slides and I thank you for sort of going back and forth with me over the last couple of days on this. I do have, you know, certain, there was, I guess what I'm, what I'm feeling is that whereas in the past administration, I could almost guess the direction in which they were going to go. I don't get that here. So, I was wondering whether you could talk about, what are the values that are undergirding all this? What can we expect from this administration as you go forward with these difficult situations? You know, what, you know, what's the there, there for all of you so that we're not surprised by specific decisions that you may make? We may not agree with them, but I think we want to be able to understand where you're going at a very fundamental way. So, that, that's my first question. Where are you going and how do we, you know, how do, you know, how can we know what to expect from you? I have also, I also liked the enabling conditions that was really helpful to see because it sort of fills out some of the things that you're seeing as problems. These are the things that you're going out to solve, right? Correct? I mean, these are the things that are troubling you. I was surprised, for example, where you're talking about safe, welcoming, supportive, and affirming schools. You know, what kind of, you know, how are you dealing with the accountability of principals for that? What, you know, what is it that you're gonna, what is different about what you're gonna do that will guarantee that happen? Because, I mean, I've read this before now, I've been here for four years, I've read it many times, but we still over and over find that there's such a variety of ways in which principals and schools, you know, interpret those four words so that, you know, and I'm particularly concerned, for example, about parent engagement and how that is, you know, you know, translated into the different schools, the whole question of, you know, sustaining, you know, linguistically sustaining practices and some of the problems that we see in the ELL task force. So, I, I'm, again, who's accountable and how are you going to make them accountable? The student-centered decision-making, you know, there's like a whole library of research on student-centered teaching now. I mean, this is sort of like, it's been the last 10 years, some, what is it that you're going to do that's different from what has been done before? What, you know, how is your administration going to be known as the student-centered, which is something, it's, it's new. We haven't seen that as a flag, you know, very, you know, at least in the time that I've been here. I also have my last, so basically, again, it's really trying to understand where you're going and what are these things, you know, especially in questions of accountability and values, where are you moving to? Specifically on the, on, on the, I can't get away from the absence of Latinos in this page. I gotta bring it up. I'm hoping other people will understand. This is not acceptable. Totally not acceptable when half of the student, almost half of the student body is Latino. So, it, you know, I need, I'm hoping that you're all, when you're talking about these pending positions, that you're searching far and wide to make sure that you talk to Dr. and to Mr. O'Neill about how he went about finding a needle in a haystack or finding the kind of people that he was looking for. It's not, it's not impossible. So, I'm hoping that that will be. Specifically, I'm, I'm, you know, as an old social worker, I want to know a little bit about the changes that you're doing in Selwell. I actually understood and liked what was being done before because it was, it sort of got away from the boutique model of Boston mental health delivery and was trying to be much more, you know, democratic and, and sort of spreading the, the, you know, the wealth of, you know, at a different levels, at different tiers. So, to me, that was understandable as a mental health practitioner. I want an understanding of how you're changing that and why was such a, you know, very fast move of personnel and, and perspective was done on Selwell. So, those are my questions.
Okay, so that's a long list. Let me take them in, in order and make sure I get to most of them and please remind me when I miss one. I want to start very straightforwardly around the issue of leadership recruitment and particularly in the Latinx community and as, as well as continuing to build a diverse team overall, but with a very high priority on recruiting Latinx talent. I think I've spoken with you multiple times. You've heard me on this. I've spoken with Alex. I've been making phone calls to do outreach, exactly the sorts of things that you're encouraging us. It is a high priority. We do have a diverse team across the leadership. We are not well represented at all among Latinos and Latinas, and I think it is a very high priority. It's also true at our school leader level, not in the proportion that it should be. So, I think all I can say to you is that that was one of the first things that I observed as, you know, even in the initial moves of, of moving, looking at available talent already in the district, it was clear that that would very clearly be exhausted. And when we begin to look for these external positions, we will have to go outside and work very aggressively. So, as far as I'm concerned, that is the priority around recruitment. And I, I, what I am hopeful for is that these are significant and meaty leadership positions across a wide variety of issue areas. We need communications talent. We need high school expertise. There's, you know, academic positions, SEL positions. So, I will stop there, but that is a high priority. And I think that's one that I've communicated clearly to everyone internally as well in our recruitment. The, in terms of, Charles will be happy to jump in on SEL in particular, but I think one of the things that will be happening is that by moving Dr. Grantson into his role, that gives him an opportunity to move very deeply into looking at both academics and professional learning, which has been pointed to as an area of some concern and interest and additional focus needed, as well as supporting the work in SEL. And so, the, I think later in December, he is planning, as he works more deeply in his review, to come back with a SEL-specific and asset-specific presentation, but I'd be happy to have Dr. Grantson speak, at least initially, to some of his beginning work.
Well, one second. My question is really about the sort of revamping and the fast-moving of, sort of the old way that it was going to be done. And I just want to understand what was wrong, what, what is being done that's different now? And I don't think you were on yet, so that's why I re-erected.
Yeah, and I'll just quickly say to that, I think a lot of what we're looking at in terms of Selwell is how we deepen the work that was already underway. And it's about the way we do it and the impact it has on schools. And so, I think Superintendent has mentioned a number of times that she's done listening sessions and already in my school visits and talking to school leaders, understanding how that department works and the impact it's supposed to have on schools has been a little fuzzy. And so, it's really deepening that and making sure that there's a clear through line from the work that's happening in a department directly to schools and classrooms.
Right.
And so, that's the overall goal, but happy to talk to you and go deeper in terms of like specifics.
And just to underscore this, Dr. Yurarte, I think this is not necessarily a recasting of the work in SEL, but a reflection of the fact that I think what we're hearing from schools is that that is the support that they want. The concepts and philosophy are right, but the drill down into implementation has not come fast enough or significantly enough over the three years of developing that department. So, it is about implementation and delivery that we have heard clearly from schools as the charge, which did seem to necessitate a change in, in the leadership of delivery and also keeping in mind that the overall position, leadership position for this department had been vacant since mid-May with Dr. Estrada's departure. So, that was, that departure had already happened by July, but I think the work here is focused on, on responding to what we're hearing from school communities and school leaders about figuring out how to deliver and implement that work that we're all in agreement is the right, the right approach to supporting SEL and academics. And so, that's what Charles is focusing on.
You don't want to state my concern?
If I can interrupt as well, I don't, I appreciate the questions and I don't want to curtail them in any way, but I do want to point out that at the retreat last week when we started to talk about how we're going to sequence some of the issues that we're going to talk about throughout the rest of this semester as well as into 2019, we did schedule an asset presentation for later this fall, which will talk about the approaches that the district will, will be taking with respect to academics in a much deeper dive and will be talking in further detail on Selwell in the spring. So, with that, I just want to use that to try to give a little bit of boundaries around what they might be able to respond to with respect to what this approach is right now versus some of the on-the-ground changes that are able to be made as a result of this approach and the change, and the outcomes that are expected from those.
I just want to make sure that we don't revert to the previous way that mental health was being planned or delivered in, in schools because it was not getting anywhere. It was, it was reaching a very small number of kids. Okay? And, and, you know, having 100, 200, it's like, you know, just reaching the very top. And that is, that is sort of the model that BPS, and, and BPS has gotten a lot of awards for that model, but it's a model that didn't work for these kids because there were a lot of them that were not being served. So, that's my only concern, okay? So, moving forward, my, you know, that, that I'd really, you know, welcome a, a discussion with you, but I think it's a policy issue for this body to decide how they want to, how do you want to think about the deployment of, you know, mental health professionals and the work of mental health professionals in the schools, which had, you know, we can't be going back and forth and back and forth because it, you know, it's like, you know, becoming a very confusing thing. And last year, we got a significant support from the mayor on this, which hopefully will, you know, we were hoping it would, it would be of help. But I'm not yet, I'm not, you know, getting how that is going to have an effect in what is, what would be presented here. Again, I'm, my concern is what can we expect of you? What, what do we, what should we be thinking about when you're, when you're, you know, what, what should we expect of you?
And I think we will be happy to go into significant depth on that, but I think at this point in the conversation, what I would point to, so the, those particular investments are, I think, critical, but only the tip of the iceberg. They have been fully allocated out to schools. And so, that is the approach in the form of nurses, social workers, and psychologists. And I think the ongoing work of Pacelli, which you had asked about earlier, Alex, is also something that we need to dig into and bring back to you in, in a way that looks at how that is being implemented as it moves into year two. But I think the part of what is driving the focus here is, when you asked about the core values, I think they are embedded in the enabling conditions. And I would point to the teaching and learning as the core business, one of the, and I want to point to some of the focus areas that Dr. Grantson will be leading and in collaboration with Mary and others at the high school level, relative to how we support schools. One of the things that we heard very clearly also from schools is that while many schools are, are happy with the autonomy of their, of their teaching and learning approaches and academics, we heard equally from schools that do not feel that they have been getting the sort of support around curricular expertise, around academic support. That is a very clear mandate. It is a very high value. It is one of Charles, my priorities and Charles' priorities. So, when you look at the enabling conditions and the reference to reaffirming teaching and learning as the core business of the Boston Public Schools, that is meant as a, as a statement of focus and intent, as was the renaming of Dr. Grantson's position to chief academic officer, which is not what it had been, to again underscore the fact that we must step up and support particularly where our schools are asking for it and are not feeling that they are getting it in the way that they would like. And so, I think as we roll forward into the school support conversation that Charles and Mary will lead, I think that's an important part of it. So, I will stop there for now, but be happy to come back in greater depth, led by Dr. Grantson, on the specifics of work in SEL, but I think that is the overall intent and focus there.
Thank you, Ms. Peril. Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you. So, I guess I'll wait for your, the rest of the presentation because I guess my largest question is, and my memory is more foggy these days, but it's, what I'm hearing, I'm not understanding what was done previously versus what is, what you're talking about today. Because when I think of under Dr. Chang, we had these different tiers of supports for schools. And so, I'm trying to understand, so I will wait for this and maybe I will understand better. Maybe, I'm just not a block person, so as you speak, it might make sense to me and be clear. And my other question is just around, how do you, how are you assessing what each school needs? And given that I, I still see a lot of the same staff, I see a splattering of new staff, but really the same staff, how is that, how does that change the game? So, in essence, if people still have the same skills, but schools are saying they didn't get what they needed, then I guess I don't, it's not matching to me. But maybe when you guys are presenting, I will better understand again how this, how we still have people with same skills, but they'll be meeting schools with what they need, where they're at, and how, how that match happens and how can I better understand that?
So, why don't we move into talking about the school support learning networks? Mary was one of the leaders of this, along with Tommy Welch and Donna Muncie in its earlier conception, earliest conceptual stages, as well as Dr. Chang. And some of this came out of a recognition that the school support was not being delivered as effectively and in, as differentiated a way. And I want to also thank Dr. Donna Muncie, who was a key architect of this work. And I want to also thank Dr. Donna Muncie, who was a key architect of this work as well. But moving into that, Mary, if you want to unveil that, there is an answer to the assessment that they did in order to put, place schools into the networks as well. So Mary, why don't you take us down there and Charles?
Thank you. So our BPS problem of practice, I think this language was mentioned earlier and consistent with the thinking that continuous improvement as educators, we want to continue to get better. And so our problem of practice has remained the same for the past three years, which is a departure from previous years where problem, a new problem of practice would be brought and new, a new set of priorities. One of the things we're especially focusing on this year, and specifically within asset, but across the central office, is better defining this probably about five words in the phrase authentic learning opportunities and what that looks like for our students. Last year, the essentials were rolled out and this year, a key focus is making sure that we're providing teachers with professional learning opportunities to deepen their understanding and their practice across the essentials. And additionally, if you look sort of at the last part, the last sentence of the problem of practice, where it sort of highlights our failures and it sort of gets to what we were just referencing, that if we believe that our failure to support school leads to achievement gaps, it's really important that we dig deep to really understand what else central office needs to do differently to meet schools' needs. And so one way of doing that, Mary Driscoll will talk more about, is sort of how we're organizing support to schools. But I think also as a part of the sort of asset review I'm doing in my first ninety days in this role, is to better understand resource alignment and sort of our overall focus around how we sort of take on or address many of the obstacles the superintendent referenced earlier. So these are questions that we're attempting to, I'm sorry, these are questions that we're attempting to answer as a part of the asset review, which will essentially be a review of the state of teaching and learning, teaching and learning in the Boston Public Schools. The school is the unit of change, is while our problem of practices remain the same, we're not standing still. So three years ago, there was a focus on ensuring that our classrooms were places that were infused with cognitively demanding tasks and an idea that each school would have an instructional focus and that instructional leadership teams would sort of lead that work in schools and consistent with what Mary mentioned earlier about building that teacher capacity and capacity of teacher leaders to lead the work in support of school leadership. We added the lens of culturally and linguistically sustaining practices and created the essentials for instructional equity as a description of what our classroom should look like. And this year, we are focusing more on the idea that the school is the unit of change. And as Mary moves on, she'll talk more about that and sort of the underlying research behind that. And the overall goal is of the idea around the school being a unit of change is to ensure that schools experience a relationship with central office that has more of the attributes of a partnership. And so we are owning the work along with them and focusing on supporting our lowest performing schools. Continuity, maintaining focus around the problem of practice. And so this sort of aligns with what I was mentioning earlier around the through line, the clear, the clear through line between the work we do at central office, our problem of practice, and the impact that it has on schools and classrooms. And so if there, if the instructional focus informs the work that schools are doing to create their quality school plans, we see that sort of direct through line from the problem of practice to the essentials, our CLSP work, the instructional focus of the school, and then the quality school plans that we're requesting that each school produce as a part of this new school supports model. Schools are examining and examined over the past month, beginning during our August Leadership Institute, their MCAS and results and other student learning data, set targets for improvement, and identified action steps that will move them towards those targets. Whilst at the simultaneously central office, worked on aligning resources to support schools in the work. And so for example, in asset, across those departments, there are liaisons that are supporting the work at schools in each of the networks that Mary will talk more about.
So I think maybe this is a little bit to your question, Alex, around like what actually is different, if it's, looks like a lot of the same names and the same players. So one of the key differences is this idea of really differentiating the school networks by need. Previously, the team of academic superintendents, we took our 125 schools, divided them, you know, roughly by the eight people that were on the team so that every leader, every academic superintendent had approximately the same number of schools. And so the, you know, the number was anywhere from 15 to 18 and that, you know, really didn't allow for the high touch that we know some schools need. So one of the things that happened last spring, led by Donna Muncie and others, was really looking at what the research says about if you're, if we're working on school improvement and we're working on making principals more effective leaders for school improvement, how do we organize that? And we looked at a lot of the work that's been done by the Wallace Foundation over the last couple of years and, you know, a number of studies across districts that look very much like our district. We also looked at the work that's being done by the Partnership for Leadership in Education at the University of Virginia with the Ed School and the Darden Business School there. And we made this decision to reorganize our school networks so that there are, both in the elementary side and the high school side, some networks that are very small where the span of control is anywhere from six to nine schools. So one academic superintendent supporting just a small number of schools, all of those schools being high need schools. And the way we identified the schools, you know, the process of assessment and making those determinations was looking at a lot of both qualitative and quantitative data, previous, you know, accountability data, formative data, school climate data. We also made visits to the schools, we did instructional rounds, we did focus groups for schools where we had had a monitoring site visit, you know, done by DESI. We, you know, looked at the information in, in those reports. And I really want to give a shout out to our Office of Data and Accountability because as we were doing this, it was in this world where we knew the accountability system was changing. We knew that the accountability that we're all going to see in just a couple of hours now was going to be based just on one year of data, which we did not have at the time. And they really did an amazing job of modeling based on previous data sets and on what we knew was going to be baked into this accountability, accountability framework, modeling enough that we were able to make decisions about which school should be placed in these high support networks before we actually saw the data. And for the most part, the schools that we have in these small networks are absolutely the schools that need the most support. There are three that, you know, we probably didn't get it quite right on, and so we're actively talking about how we're going to pull those additional couple of schools in for more support.
Just point out on that point, it was three of 86 that ended up feeling like they were mismatched, so that work was fairly accurate, at least according to the newest data that's coming out. So kudos to the Office of Data and Accountability in particular.
So we have in the elementary side, four networks that are very small and then two networks that are very large. And so those are the networks that include our higher performing schools, relatively higher performing. We fully acknowledge that all of our schools have a ways to go. And then a similar process in the high school where we created three networks, one being the network that includes the highest need high schools, which includes a lot of our open enrollment high schools, one which has mainly our autonomous schools, and then another one that includes all of our alternative schools. I think another key thing we were able to accomplish in, in doing this reorg, and again in, in trying to listen to what we were hearing from school leaders, was in the case of the larger networks, you know, recognizing that span of control for one academic superintendent is very large, they're not going to get the high touch. And so we reached out to our school leaders and found five very strong principals on the elementary side and two or three on the high school side that were ready to step in and be co-facilitators of adult learning for their peers. So that, you know, they, the academic superintendents were not left on their own with these large numbers of schools.
Do you want to go up to slide 12 for a minute, Mary, and then come back since you're on this topic?
Yeah, there's a lot of clicks here. Oh, there we go. Yeah, so this in the, on the elementary side, this shows the five, what we're calling professional learning communities. So these are the schools that are from those two larger networks of relatively higher performing schools. Julia Bott, who's the school leader at the Mendel, is leading one network. Okoswa Osibabi at the P A Shaw is leading another, Jeff Rose at the Perry, Jason Gallagher at Harvard Kent, and Marjorie Soto at the Hurley. And they are doing this work supported not only by the two academic superintendents, Grace Way and Jody Fortuna, but also by our Director of Leadership Development, Megan Reed, and then in partnership with the Lynch Leadership Academy. So the, the goal is to really work with this group of leaders and make them excellent facilitators of adult learning, which, you know, addresses part of our pipeline as well that, you know, we always need to be thinking about, what's the pipeline from schools to central office and how are we developing school leaders for taking a next step if that's something that they're interested in doing?
And the other thing that this spoke to, which we also heard clearly, is that among these schools, a number of school leaders expressed a lot of desire to shape their own professional learning and to gravitate into networks. And the other element of support is that in collaboration with the Lynch Leadership Academy, these five principal leaders then have Lynch Leadership Academy Fellows placed in their schools in, under, alongside of the school leaders, which then gives those school leaders a little more bandwidth to do this work with their peers. So this is the sort of articulated support network at the leadership level that undergirds this.
Can I ask a question while you're on that? So is there opportunity, are, are there opportunities for schools that you're grouping that are higher needs to work with, schools that are less need? Because it seems very isolated to me and I understand, but will there be opportunities for schools that are performing better to be matched with schools that are not? And just some cross collaboration versus the very siloed?
So one opportunity is that the professional learning that's happening in these five PLCs is happening at different times than the network learning that is happening for the smaller network. So any school leader, for instance, the network that Marjorie is leading is a network of, of schools, many of which are either dual language schools or schools that have large SEI populations that want to explore possibilities of dual language or heritage language. And we have a couple of dual language schools that are in the, the higher support networks, but will be joining this network for their professional learning so that they can engage in that work as well.
Do you have any further questions, Ms. Oliver Davila, at this time? You know, I, I just want to take a pause and say, this is a little bit different from the way that we've done presentations in the past, but it feels like it's working with this conversational style. And so I, I think it's appropriate to have a little bit of leeway and the superintendent is open to that, as I know the presenters are as well. So Dr. Yurarte, if you'd like to continue with your question.
I was wondering whether you could walk us through both sides of this. I mean, I, I think I got this part and this is sort of the distribution of schools according to learning needs.
Yes.
Correct? And then this is the operational networks, has a lot of little numbers, so can you?
It's like a secret code.
And actually, perhaps we can bounce this one to Dr. Granson, who prior to taking over as interim CAO was the Deputy Chief Operations Officer and the operational supes fell underneath his leadership.
Okay, but what I, what I'm trying to understand is how they, how they play with each other.
Yep. Dr. Granson?
So the, one of the things that we heard as we gather feedback through that, throughout this process in the spring from school leaders is that they valued their relationships with their operational superintendents. And that if we could have that be the one constant after having three years of reorgs, they would value that. And so we kept that the same. So each, for the most part, maybe with the exception of one or two schools, every school is in their same sort of operational network. And they're pretty much regionalized.
Yeah, they're geographic.
Geographic, yes.
Exactly.
And so the numbers you see correspond to the network numbers so that you're able to see, if you look in a school, the operational superintendent can easily look at that or someone else can look, look at it and say, okay, that school has a five beside it, turn to the back, that school's a network.
Okay, so that's, that's what.
This is a functional guide for us, so any one of us can immediately look at, you know, at the Beethoven and know which operational soup and which operational leader. So this is a very tactical tool for central office.
That's great. I mean, I, I got it now. The, my question then is, you know, if you're, if you're organizing according to learning needs, what I would like, what I would expect to see is schools not only that have, that are Level Four, Level Three, but also schools that maybe have, you know, inclusion classrooms or, you know, SEI classrooms. Where, how do they, you know, are, how are they in here? Because I see them all over.
Yes. So in, in terms of the attributes that, you know, they're, that we used in grouping the learning networks, we gave a lot of consideration and we, you know, asked for input from school leaders about things like programming in the schools, geography, particular interest or language, you know, programs that were in schools. But we, we also took into consideration, for instance, the schools in Network Two are all of the schools that are either what were formerly Level Four schools under DESI or schools that had already begun the process of writing a proactive turnaround plan. So all of those schools in their school improvement work were using the DESI turnaround leadership practices as kind of their organizing structure. And so it made sense to group that group of schools together. Network One are the schools that are part of a UVA partnership. And in order to become part of that network, there was a rigorous process of identifying school leaders through a behavioral event interview. That's something that was developed by the team at, at the partnership at UVA. And so that was a group of schools where we had a sort of a match between a school leader that had shown strong capacity for turnaround work and a school that was, as we predict, our prediction was, was going to be in, in need of, of sort of that level of support. The remaining two groups, one of them, we tried to group together schools, middle schools and schools that were K to Eights so that there were, you know, all of them were dealing with a, that population of students in grades six through eight as their challenge area. And then the last network, Network Four, that was sort of our swing network. That was where we, originally there were about 20 schools in that network because we were, you know, still doing this process. And until ODA did that data modeling that I talked about, they were able to do that early in the summer, once we had the preliminary accountability data. And so once we had that data, we were able to make some decisions from that group of 20 to narrow it down to nine schools that remained in Network Four. So that, that's how we landed with those groups. Within the PLCs, they, they definitely are organized around things like dual language, as I mentioned earlier. One PLC, the one that Julia Bott is facilitating, our schools that all are working on inclusion. So some of that was, and, and that alignment was done through school leader interest and sort of raising their hand and saying, this is, you know, kind of the network of schools I want to work with. There's one network that is all schools that are serving just the early childhood grades. So the EECs and schools like the P A Shaw and the Mata Hunt, which currently only goes up to grade two.
Uh huh. That's helpful. That's very helpful. Okay, thank you.
I think you left off on the all-school support slide, which is the one. I think you left off on the all-school support slide, which is the one-
Yeah, and rather than maybe, you know, since we make it more of a conversation and not take you through a lot of PowerPoint clicks, what the graphic is intended to show is that all schools have, there's a, excuse me, a foundation that all schools are going to receive in terms of the things that schools need to function. They need a budget analyst. They need support for staffing from O H C. They need special education support, English learner support. All schools have a liaison that is supporting them in those areas. All schools have an operational superintendent and an academic superintendent, as we discussed. And then, the schools that are in the lower need networks have, you know, some of them are also part of kind of opt-in programs like C B H M, the mental health approach, or schools that are part of E F A or other initiatives.
Excellence for All.
Excellence for All, thank you. So, schools that are part of those opt-in programs, you know, there's some supports that go with those programs that are regardless of the need of the school. It's more because they're part of the program. And then, for schools that are in the high need networks, we've created this, the circle is intended to denote this idea of sort of a group of designated liaisons that are providing wraparound support, mostly targeted towards the academic work of the schools. So, they're coming from the Selwell Department, from the Opportunity Gap Office, from the Office of Data and Accountability, their Data Inquiry Network, and from academics. And I think what's very different about this work to the previous iterations is that that team of liaisons and the academic superintendent are sitting together weekly. They're going to the schools together. Tomorrow, they'll all be at schools with the group of leaders in the network, the liaisons in the network. And we're really pushing this idea that it's a partnership. So, central office is not making decisions about schools, saying, we think you really will benefit from this and you'll benefit from this, and then telling schools, here's what we're going to do for you. It's very much more a partnership of looking together at what the current state of performance is in the school, thinking about what's the right order of operations for supports, and then building that support together as a team.
And I think, I'll just step in, that this is one of the places that, again, is reflective of feedback that we were getting from school leaders, but also feedback that central office leaders were offering on their, in their own reflections of where they felt they were not yet meeting the needs of schools. So, the sort of school support and academic superintendent work, and then the asset department work, while all very rich and deep, were not well-connected. And so, this exercise that the teams have been putting themselves through to reorganize and integrate their supports is feeling new and different. It's also feeling a little, you know, there's some rub and awkwardness at times as people realign. We're pulling in people from different offices. You heard Mary just mention four different offices that provide different kinds of support. So, I think this year in the rollout, we're really, one of the things I'm looking at carefully, and I think the leadership team is looking at as well, is how does that work? Where are we too thinly supported? Where might we be duplicating effort? And how do we weave those in? But I think there is broad buy-in in the leadership team that organizing central office in this way to wrap around schools where the need is greatest and then ensure that we're not shorting the schools, you know, just because they're in a slightly better place, is, I think, something that we'll be looking carefully at, particularly in these first few months and before we head into budgeting season. Because that would be the time to pay attention to how our resources support this model, if it is indeed the right approach.
And I think to touch on your question about accountability, the idea that we're talking a lot about is reciprocal accountability. That as this team is working with a school, there's a sit-down with the academic superintendent, the school leader, and then the liaison from whatever department it is that's going to do the work to clearly spell out, here's, you know, here's the plan for eight weeks. You're going to come in, you're going to work with grade three, you're going to coach them in their literacy. School leader, you're going to do classroom visits, you know, a couple of times a week to make sure that what they're being coached on is actually visible. And academic superintendent, you're going to hold the school leader accountable for doing that coaching, for providing feedback. Because we know that any professional development in and of itself is going to have much less impact than if there's ongoing coaching and support. Because you don't learn something by hearing about it once. You need to, like, get feedback about how you're doing as you apply it. So, that idea of reciprocal accountability, that there's clarity in both directions. Here's what is expected on the school side, and here's what's expected on the central office side.
Thank you. And Ms. Driscoll, before I turn it back over to members for questions to close out this report, as we do have two other ones on the agenda this evening to go, I did want to just circle back, and your final slide relates to the secondary network. And just wanted to ensure that, you know, there was nothing further. We've talked very broadly, I think, about the approach that you're taking generally to the networks. And I know there's a lot of commonality between what you're doing at the elementary and secondary levels, but to the extent that you want to address any of that in brief before we move to questions once again.
Yeah, I think the, we're recognizing that the level of differentiation, you know, needs to sort of, naturally, there's going to be a lot of difference between what high school leaders are looking for in their professional learning and what elementary and middle school leaders are looking for. And so, while each network has an arc of learning that they're laying out, the high school headmasters have also said, here's some learning we need to do together. And so, there's, you know, sort of a more fluid back and forth between learning in the small networks and learning together as a group.
Well, thank you very much. I'll note again that, you know, I think we've gone through quite a few rounds of questions here, but before we move on to the other reports, is there any remaining questions from the membership? Happy to entertain that. Ms. Robinson?
Just have one quick one. I was just concerned about the size of Networks Five and Six because they are so drastically out of proportion with the other elementary and also with the secondary. And what was the thinking there to make those so significantly larger? Or not, maybe 20 schools and have four of them or something? No, go ahead.
I mean, one limiting factor was, as we were doing this, it was, it needed to be basically cost neutral. We didn't have the ability to create additional positions. And so, you know, probably in an ideal world, we would have more academic superintendents so that those networks would be smaller as well. Although, you know, it is important to note, in other iterations in the district, there were times when, you know, we had three, I think at the time they were called deputies, but each of them was overseeing 30 or 35 schools. So, I think that adding the lead principal role to that group means that, you know, a significant amount of time is spent by the academic superintendents who are leading professional learning themselves in preparing good adult learning. And so, that is completely taken off the plate of the two academic supes who are, have the large groups of schools.
And I think in its initial, thank you for asking that question. So, that is one of the questions we are monitoring as we implement this. So, this was essentially on paper last spring. And so, over the course of the summer, in working with this team, we have been looking at how can we make it real and implement it? But I think there are limits in the resources. The principal leaders was a very effective and, I think, creative solution in collaboration with the Lynch Leadership Academy. What I will point out is that that model was more fully developed at the elementary and middle school network level. And so, one of the questions that I'm monitoring is, what is the right strategy at the high school level? You know, those decisions were made to, that, before I arrived, that did not put as many of those resources at the high school level. I think that's an open and important question. But I think the, we are all looking at the elementary and middle model as potentially a way through, and then also assessing at what point are additional resources needed, period. So, that is an open question that, to your, some of your earlier questions, Meran, is something that we will be looking carefully at.
I was, that's where I was going next. I've been trying to understand the relationship of this to the budget as we prepare for that discussion. I have one, I have two questions. Number one is a question that I'm surprised that you haven't raised, which is, what do schools need as a base? What is the base? I mean, you talk here about foundational support, but as you go around, you, you know, what is it that schools really need? And how does that translate into a budget increase or decrease for each particular school? And I think that would be tremendously helpful for us as we're making decisions on the budget. You know what I mean? Because that is like, we have no idea, you know, what are some of the differences. And the other, the other one is, again, going back to the accountability. Mary, you and I, us and the L L Tassels have had this discussion a lot, which is, there are times in which, you know, there is a discrepancy between what there should be in a school and what actually is. So, how does this structure help principals begin to make the right decisions about employing, you know, teachers that really match the needs of their students? So, I was wondering whether, what the accountability piece? And again, that has a budget implication. Because if we're talking about including more teachers that have specific language requirements, as is the discussion that we usually have with you, it, you know, that means money. So, how does this all engage the whole discussion of budget?
So, I'll just add to that and say that I think that that's one of the large questions I'm looking at as I come in and continue to dig in. And it's exciting because it's a big challenge. But if we can answer that question, I think we can get, make a lot of headway in terms of eliminating the opportunity and achievement gaps.
I agree. That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
That's the bottom line here.
Yeah. And I actually had a meeting earlier this week with Eleanor Lawrence and Colin Rolles and others around exploring, like, sort of like the impact analysis around our budget and sort of where we invest resources and how, and the impact that has on schools and teaching and learning. And they agreed to work with me to sort of embed that analysis into the asset review. And so, I'm really excited about this opportunity to sort of further dig into that question.
And Dr. Granson, Dr. Yuriarte, I'll add as well that, you know, going back once again to our conversation about the calendar last week at the retreat, it's all tentative right now, and we're trying to further align, you know, the further we get out, how we can schedule all of this. But we certainly put on for the beginning of December that presentation that had been requested by Ms. Robinson at the budget vote earlier this year to do a look back on how the budget was implemented in the early going of the school year, look forward as to what the outlook would be for FY '20, as well as talk a little bit about what the long-term financial planning work is that's been happening within the district. And we had aligned it together with the asset report as well, which is the one I alluded to earlier, which I think can, again, talk to a little bit more about how we take, how we've been doing our budget in the past, how we see it going forward, and how we're going to operationalize that within academics to realize the outcomes that we're looking for.
With a small word of caution about the pre-index, as you know.
Indeed.
I don't want to just pretend that it's not happening.
No, thank you and understood. And I will just remind us all about two of your questions. These are exactly the questions that we are using as a guide. This is about two and a half months into implementing this new model. And I just want to really applaud the team, both those who are at the table now and particularly Mary, who was a part of this early design work, and Donna Muncy as well, and many other members of their team. But I think these are exactly the questions that we need to ask when implementing a new way of doing business, which is, does it work? How do we know? And did we get it right in the first rollout? Or do we need to adjust and modify how we deliver that support?
And I think one thing that Charles and I would very much like to add is, we're describing this to you, there's no substitute for actually seeing it for yourself. So, we really encourage and invite all of you to reach out about setting up a time to, you know, come and walk schools with us and sort of see what it looks like on the ground.
Very good. Josh Coleman?
Great. What I want to do is make some observations as we go forward because it's late and I don't want to spend a lot of time discussing it. But first, when we first heard about the ideas of going to this kind of a network approach in the spring, it was very exciting, and I'm glad to see that we're following through on that. But I have a couple of questions, and I want to highlight what Dr. Yuriarte was pointing out, is that one of our challenges in a district that's focused on schools, units of change, is accountability. So, one of the things I want to hear about is, through this chain of superintendent, assistant superintendents, network leaders, and da-da-da-da, how that, everyone can be held accountable. What is each person's job? And how will we know what's getting done? And what will our responses be when it's not getting done? I think we have to hear that. Otherwise, we're going to, you know, get back to the point of having schools falling out and not being able to find out exactly where the problems are. So, that's one thing I'm looking forward to. In the, on, I have a reaction that I just wanted to think through, not right now, to, I'm getting lost here in my slides. But the one with the plans, you're talking about the pass-through. Let me find it here.
Early on in the slide deck, yeah.
It's early on in the slide deck. I want to find it so I can really-
There you go. It's right up on the screen.
Yes, that, it's always seemed to me that we need to talk more about each individual school's plan and highlight that in the conversation. And there's a lot of noise around that in that slide. And I think we sometimes get caught in that noise. When it's the school plan and what's working, what's not working. So, that's one observation that I want to track as we go forward. And the other is, the relationship between Essentials for Instruction and C L S P. You know, they're in two different boxes, and my fears are remain in two different boxes. And we'll talk about one, and we'll talk about the other. And we're really not talking about teaching and learning really clearly there. I'd like to find a way to, how are those really integrated? And how do we see it integrated? So, in practice, it may be integrated, but at this level, it looks a little bit too far apart. So, that coherence, I think, is really important for us to see and hear about.
Yeah, and just, you know, I think for explanation, C L S P is positioned underneath the Essentials because basically it is the foundation of the Essentials. So, the Essentials are a description of what classrooms should look like if we are fully embracing this idea of C L S P. The other thing I will highlight about the quality school plan, because I absolutely agree with you, that, like, the noise around it needs to be stripped away, and the plan has to be the thing that's guiding the work. And so, what we've done this year is take the plan and actually ask school leaders to develop just one semester goals that are really sort of a fine-grained level, that are super clear. And the academic superintendents, when they're going into schools for school visits, that plan is on the table every time, and they're having a conversation about, you know, what are your action steps? Where are you? How's it going? Let's go to some classrooms and see if we see evidence of what you say is happening, what you say is happening in your I L T or in your P D, professional development time or in your grade-level team meeting. So, we're really working to keep that plan being more than just, you know, something that everyone works furiously on from August through October when it's due, and then it, you know, sort of starts gathering dust.
And so, I would love to see and learn is, who's going to get what kind of merit increase for reaching those semester goals? And how that's going to roll up in the system? So that if I'm ahead of a network and 80% of my people are getting, meeting their goals, I get a lot of big paycheck and take us all out for dinner. That's what I want to see.
I don't think that's in the current plan, but-
Well, the identification of meeting the goals. And I was putting it in the positive rather than the negative, which, thanks.
Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman. And thank you to the presenters this evening for being very flexible in your presentation and having more of a conversation with us. There's a lot of information, obviously, here to digest. And, you know, a case in point, where we've scheduled a number of follow-up discussions over the course of the semester to further dive into some of these items. So, with that, I want to thank you again, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you quite a bit in the future. And we'll be moving on to our next report. So, with that, our next report, our second report, I should say, this evening, is a Build B P S update. At this time, I'd like to invite the following people to please step forward with their presentation. Chief of Staff Rob Consalvo, Chief Engagement Officer Monica Roberts, and the Deputy Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter. But first, I'll turn it over to the interim superintendent for her opening comments.
Thank you, and I know the night is now long, but I think-
We're just warming up. We're getting a bit used to this.
That's right. It's only nine o'clock. Okay. So let me just say that I think this is an important conversation that we have been eager to have. And I want to thank Nate, Rob, and Monica for guiding and leading this conversation. One of the major charges that the, you know, school committee put in front of me and, quite frankly, as I moved into this role, one of the major priorities that was clearly reflected by many with whom I've spoken, both in school communities as well as in central office, is to move forward and re-engage the conversation around the long-term shape of the district, the, the long-term facilities plan in bringing, in re-engaging the conversation around Build BPS. And critical to that is re-engaging a robust and authentic community engagement process on the Build BPS Educational and Facilities Master Plan. And because this is a significant conversation, we've really broken it out in two chunks and/or two sections, if you will. And one is this evening, we're going to focus primarily on just a summary of what has been done and where we are. I think Build BPS has been in a little bit of flux or stasis over the past some months. And then look forward to the format of how we will re-engage the community discussion process and then how we will, what are the components of the plan that we will bring out in the second part of restarting the Build BPS conversation, which is on October 17, to put a draft and concrete proposal in front of all of you, in front of the community, and most importantly, in front of school leaders to bring, to have something concrete to respond to and provide feedback to. So Rob and Nate and Monica will provide us with an overview of what we hope is a thorough community engagement plan, but one that we are seeking your input as well as additional input from members of the community and particularly school leaders. We are looking to build out a, an ongoing community conversation that is multi-pronged and reaches every area of the city. Monica in particular will explain how members of her team will be connecting with community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, parent and student groups, and more, beginning at least initially in mid-October and through mid-December, but then continuing onward beyond that. And the idea of this engagement process, I think the prior engagement was really very important for idea generation, for building a, you know, getting a sense of big picture ideas. And at this point, what we think is important is to bring that together with the synthesis of the data and the analysis that the BPS team has been doing, to put something concrete forward that people can respond to and that we can, you know, modify based on feedback. So, and the, the overall draft plan that we will bring forward in mid-October includes everything from renovations and upgrades to building new schools and where the data shows those large neighborhood areas should be, to mergers and closures of schools that may no longer be viable according to buildings or according to where demand is coming from students and where seats are currently located. After tonight's presentation, when we finish providing an overview of the engagement plan, we will come back to you on October 17 with that specific draft plan. Because this is a very complex and massive undertaking and each decision connects to the next decision, we think it's important to lay out an engagement plan for you now ahead of a more detailed plan for the major changes so that we have your input and feedback on how we roll out this conversation. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Nate, Monica, and Rob.
Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Excited to be here tonight to begin the process and talk about next steps around Build BPS. I think what's important to begin tonight, as we talk about the overview of where we've been, is to talk about sort of, this has been a team effort with a lot of people at BPS providing input, time, advice, guidance, and a lot of work to try to continue to move this effort forward. Many people who have been working on this previously, and I see Tommy Welch, who's over there, who played an important role, as many other folks have. Currently, the Build BPS team, and it's the core planning team that's working with the superintendent and all of our stakeholders on the process, consists of myself as Chief of Staff, Sam DePina, who's our Operational Superintendent of Network D, Dr. Charles Grantson, of course, Interim Chief Academic Officer, John Hanlon, our Chief Operating Officer, Nate Cooter to my right, our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and Monica Roberts, of course, our Chief Engagement Officer, Dr. Donna Muncy, who is our Deputy Superintendent of School Supports, and Al Taylor, who's our Operational Superintendent of Network B. That's to give you, and those in the audience and watching at home, an understanding of who that core team is that is working collaboratively with the superintendent, with other members of BPS staff, with community leaders, and of course, will be working with all of you moving forward. It's also important to understand that the work isn't just limited to the Boston Public Schools. In order to be successful and as we work to move this forward, we have partnering agencies that will play a critical role working with us that are outside of this building. Agencies like the Boston Public Facilities Department, who works on facilities and building issues on a citywide basis, the BPDA, which is the Boston Planning and Development Agency. Of course, the City of Boston Office of Budget Management, who works closely with our budget team on cash flow and budget issues, as well as the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which we're very excited has been working very closely with the district and with City Hall on providing millions of dollars in revenue for repairs throughout our school districts. So they will continue to be an important partner as we're moving forward on Build BPS. It's also not just limited to necessarily government agencies. There are other folks we'll be working with. And also, interdepartmentally, we'll be working with a number of agencies such as our Office of English Language Learners, our Special Education Office, our Office of Opportunity and Achievement Gap, and of course, Monica's entire team and the Office of Engagement. So when you look at the scope of that entire piece, it really is a, a all hands on deck, both within BPS and across city government to make this happen. Of course, like everything we do here at the Boston Public Schools, our Build BPS will have equity at its center. The Build BPS team is applying an equity lens to its community engagement, to all of its planning and its implementation. And that's consistent with how we look at everything through the ends of equity here at BPS. The internal BPS team is creating an Equity Subcommittee and has created an Equity Subcommittee that includes members of the Office of Equity and the Office of Opportunity Gaps to help guide that equity process the entire way through this Build BPS process. The team has been hard at work over the last several years, working on prior engagement efforts that have really been a citywide effort to begin this process around Build BPS. So what has happened and what have we done over the last few years? We had community priority surveys that went out between April and December of 2016. We hosted information sharing events such as district-wide community forums that was held on June 4, 2016. We had neighborhood-based kitchen table talk series that went from July through August of 2016. And we had an open house between October 29th and 30th of 2017. We issued a Build BPS report on March 2 of 2017. And we held information session in office hours between March and April of 2017. And we also had a community input workshop, between workshops, between May and August of 2017. What's important to note is this was a real aggressive effort to try to be out engaging in the community and hosting a sort of diversified group of events and different things to engage different populations. Regarding the kitchen table talks, seven different kitchen table talks were held all around the district. The neighborhood-based workshops were held in 12 different locations, which had over 450 participants. That, those workshops were focused on sort of getting input on priorities and needs, but also allowed for a conversation of sort of bigger picture thinking and generating of ideas. So we were hearing from stakeholders all around the city and geographic different neighborhoods all over Boston. These meetings were allowed for broad input, but was not focused. It allowed people to have the ability to, to give their opinions and thoughts and also generate creative ideas to make that happen. So as we engaged in the pre, the first process around Build BPS, what did we hear from the community? There were several themes that came out from the community. First, expand access to high-quality schools close to home. Second, create clear education pathways from P, from pre-K to graduation. Reduce the number of transitions between schools. Address the shifting enrollment patterns in the upper elementary and middle grades. Improve the physical conditions of interior spaces, classrooms, cafeterias, libraries, bathrooms, auditoriums, and gymnasiums, among other things. Modernize our buildings with instructional technology and ensure full accessibility for students with disabilities. What we heard of, out of those seven themes were three basic components. Families want fewer transitions and more predictable pathways. BPS must leverage this process that we're currently embarking on to increase access to quality seats all across the city. And while we may not have all new buildings, we have to find ways to improve the overall physical condition and maintenance of our buildings. Put in place the technologies and structures for 21st century learning and ensure access for all of our students with disabilities. Those were three big themes that we heard in our first round of engagement. Nate?
Our first Build BPS report included two crucial pieces of information required for designing and evaluating a 10-year facilities plan. The first was a complete assessment of the, every school building, including, included in the district's portfolio. How many classrooms? What were the assets of those classrooms? What were the conditions of the building and site? Information that was critical for us to understanding the current state of our buildings across the district. The second piece of information was a 10-year demographic projection for us to be able to understand which of our neighborhoods we can anticipate additional students arriving and what are the big trends that we see as a district for serving students. Over the last year since that report has been published, we've focused on the interaction of the system in terms of the building capacity and the condition of the buildings, the program designs and placement for specific groups of students, how student demographics and distribution are influenced by school choice and enrollment patterns. This analysis has led the groundwork for us to be able to do a better job evaluating any school changes that come out of a plan to basically make sure two things. First, any changes that are proposed are feasible. It's possible for us to execute, given the school buildings that we have. And the second is to make sure it's in the best interest of all our students, especially those that are most disadvantaged in our system. As we begin engaging on the major investments in our facilities, there will be necessary trade-offs that we need to confront as an organization based on different types of projects. Back in January, when Tommy and Dan Anderson came to the, came to the school committee to present, we presented four big buckets of the type of projects that will come out. These were based on the facilities assessment and on the public feedback. Tonight, we've added a fifth category. The new addition is this idea of real estate management. This addition was based on the need for us to develop a cohesive strategy for acquiring new property and divesting of properties that are not aligned to the needs of our students. Each of these categories covers work that will change the learning environments for any given school or any given project that we're part of. And what we need to make sure we do is balance between the different categories to ensure the best outcomes for our students. Because I think we can all agree that it's possible for us to spend a billion dollars in any one of these five categories. So it's the balance of the five that will come into play. We wanted to give you a better sense of the definition of these different categories. So each of these, we've provided some basic understanding of what we're talking about. The first is new builds and expansions, and this represents our largest and most significant projects. Examples of projects include new school buildings like Orchard Gardens when it was opened. And it can also mean major renovations and expansion like the project we've seen at the Elliott over the last few years. Real estate management, as I mentioned, includes the discussion of new properties. We will both be looking for property in neighborhoods where we know we need to expand capacity and be looking to leverage opportunities as they become available on the market. So if a piece of property becomes available, we may decide that it's, it's the right time for us to acquire that for our portfolio so that we have additional options available to us. The most significant project currently under Work for Site Selection is, of course, the Quincy Upper Project, looking for that new school building. Renovations and reconfigurations is a category that's often been discussed, and it includes both the repurposing of existing buildings to better meet the needs of students in particular neighborhoods and creating opportunities to modernize and eliminate a backlog of deferred maintenance. In the case of reconfigurations, a recent example of that is the expansion of New Mission from seven to 12. And a case of a major renovation to an existing building, an example would be the Burke, where we saw a renovation to modernize that facility. System-wide initiatives represent an effort to improve education in buildings where we don't see major projects coming into play. My favorite example to talk about in that category is the IT infrastructure refresh schedule. So the I, Office of Instructional and Information Technology has done a great job over the last five to 10 years to put every school on a refresh schedule of when the technology infrastructure in the building will be replaced and modernized. That way, every school knows what the predictable schedule is for them. They can ensure that they're going to have reliable, high-quality internet access in their building. We want to move to a place where there's a number of system-wide initiatives that schools can see the upgrade schedule and can, and can know when they are scheduled to receive upgrades and the latest for any given category. And the final category, capital repairs, represents the more traditional facilities projects. We are going to continue to repair roofs, boilers, and windows, things that aren't necessarily exciting, but are, are really important. And we need to make sure the issues at schools, such as the Curly Bridge, which is a project that was in this year's capital budget, continue to move forward as we make other attempts to reduce our backlog of capital repairs. So when we come back to you later in October, we'll align our thinking and our, to both these categories and to neighborhoods so that you can see the crosswalk between how we think about and categorize the projects that are moving forward in the balance and then the likely way that the community is going to be thinking, which is, how is this going to affect the learning opportunities in my neighborhood that my students are going to have access to? To be more concrete, we also align some existing and recent past projects to the categories that we created. We want to highlight at this point the importance of the Mass School Building Authority, the MSBA. Rob already mentioned this. Since 2005, the City of Boston has made a concerted effort to leverage the MSBA funding more. Over that period, the city has...
Since 2015.
What did I?
Twenty, 2005. I just want to point out it's quite recent, so since 2015.
Sorry, 2015, the last three or four years, excuse me. The City of Boston has made a concerted effort to leverage the MSBA. The city has invested $135.7 million in projects that are eligible for the MSBA. That has allowed us to access matching funds from the MSBA in the amount of an additional $117 million. This represents a significant leveraging of their resources. In fact, the amount of money we're accessing for MSBA in 2018 is more than the amount we accessed from 2012 to 2014. Those three years have been surpassed in just 2018. So that shows the, the effort and the intentionality of the Public Facilities Department and the Facilities Department here in BPS to really access those dollars. And before everyone busts out their calculators, I want you to note that the $250 million that's noted on this slide, not all of the projects in that category are included in the Build BPS billion dollars. Some of them started and were completed before Build BPS. Some of them were started and will be completed as part of Build BPS. We just wanted to highlight some recent examples of projects in categories that, that help explain how we're thinking about approaching this work going forward.
Thank you. So one of the themes that we've heard as we've been having our community conversations is that folks really would like to have a concrete plan to, in which we can have a conver, about which we can have a conversation. And so the Build BPS team has been working towards this effort, really doing a few things, looking at the data and the feedback that we've received, looking at the values and principles that have really driven some of our decision-making, thinking about things like feasibility, to start to develop a plan, a draft plan that we would bring forth. like feasibility, to start to develop a plan, a draft plan that we would bring forth that really transforms the landscape of our schools and fosters the conditions for 21st century learning. A plan that could be implemented in phases, so we'd be thinking about what needs to happen in the near term and what needs to happen in the short term to allow the flexibility needed as there are shifts. So for example, there could be population shifts, enrollment shifts, things that need to be taken into consideration in the long term. This plan will be thinking of-- look at-- will look at the alignment between the facilities and our students' needs, as well as reflect to the extent appropriate. A lot of the blue-sky thinking that Rob talked about, some of those themes, will be reflected in that plan. So these are just-- so that we're-- we want to share some of the values that are-- were used to develop the plan that we're in the process and hopefully will present to you in October. Equity is a big piece of this in terms of ensuring that we're looking at both facility and program alignment, that we're looking at placing new builds and schools where we need them the most. We know that we have certain areas of the city that have more rapidly growing school-age youth populations, so we are looking at all of that. We want to think about how we minimize instability, uncertainty for our most vulnerable students as we move forward with this facilities process. And we also want to think about how we honor this desire to reduce transitions and increase predictability for families through reconfiguration. So one of the things my-- we have a community engagement team as part of the reorganization process. We added some bodies, so there are now four community engagement managers who will be aligned regionally to following the pattern of the operational superintendents. And their role will be to really understand deeply the regions that they're in. All of them won't need to know the entire city, but to really establish relationships in their regions with the community organizations, understand the schools, the needs of those regions. And we also have a community engagement director. That team has worked to develop a framework, which we hope to articulate the way in which the Boston Public Schools will engage all stakeholders around policies and initiatives. Our plan is to apply this framework first to Bill BPS, to do some learning about that and to think about how we might revise it. So using this framework lens, we've gone through the inform and educate and seek input processes. So those are the pieces that Rob talked about, and we are now at a place where we're ready to come back with a proposed plan and to engage the public in dialogue about that. We will take that feedback and make the modifications necessary, and then our goal is to launch and, as the framework says, to assess. So we know that part of what we have to be doing is assessing the effectiveness of our work and reporting back so that there's a common understanding of where we've landed. One of the things that we hope to do in this process is to reach every voice. We know that there are going to be people who will come to the table, and there are people who we need to make sure that we're reaching out to. So we want-- reach is critical in this process. We want to make sure that we have a common understanding across our city of what the plan is, what the impact is, what it means for all of our students and our system. And so we are hoping to build a strong network of organizations with constituent representatives, representative of the student body. So to really put our tentacles out, not just through our office, throughout the entire central office, all of Boston Public Schools, but also throughout our community. So the Community Engagement Advisory Council is one piece of this work. They will play a significant role, but we also will partner with organizations that are not necessarily serving on that body. The goal is to have authentic conversations in a way that is meaningful and accessible in a way that meets the needs of our participants. This means that we will be looking at doing both a mix of traditional things that we've done, town halls, small group meetings. We know that works for some, but we also want to be thinking about what are the things that we haven't usually done or that we haven't done as frequently. So for example, out of our office and some other offices, we've done door knocking campaigns or we've done phone-athons or we've partnered with City Hall on a go to do a rolling bowling sort of thing and getting into the community. We want to be thinking about how do we generate new ideas to do the engagement process. We had an initial meeting of our Community Engagement Advisory Council on Monday for part-- wasn't a full membership in attendance, but those who were there, one of the things we talked about was trying things that we haven't tried, failing fast and failing forward with our engagement process. And the students who were there were very excited about the potential of them taking our communications and thinking about how they make it accessible to all students, to all of our stakeholders, about how they might actually try to make and design processes that would work for young people. So this is part of the work that they will do. I've already mentioned that the Community Engagement Advisory Council launched and met this past Monday. We are actually holding a second meeting for those who were not able to attend. This meeting was to do a couple of things. One, to ensure that we had a common understanding of the role of this body. The role of this body will to be advise us around the communications and the community engagement effort and to help design it, as well as to push it out and lead it. So there will be that piece of work. We were able to come, provide an understanding of what has been done around Bill BPS to date and answer questions. And so at our next meeting, we'll start to design the engagement process. Folks are really excited about the possibility that this represents in our partnering more deeply with the community around outreach. There were things that we talked about, such as how are we going to support them and making sure they have what they need, so things like childcare and interpretation, food, access to technology. So we're thinking about the whole gamut to make sure that this is a successful process and again, that we're able to reach as many folks as possible. So this is our current expected timeline. We're working over the next few weeks to again, meet-- to reconvene the Community Engagement Advisory Council and start our engagement planning work. We do need to meet with school leaders as part of this process, and then we hope to come back and present the proposed plan to this body. Thereafter, we would like to take that plan from the end of October to the start of December and really engage deeply with the community to make sure there's a shared understanding of the plan and start to get some feedback. And then hopefully have another presentation in the winter. The engagement would be ongoing. Again, this plan is looking at how do we phase in the facilities process? So this is not a two-month process, a three-month process. We expect that this is going to be an ongoing process from year to year that we engage in the community around the pieces of the plan that are coming up.
So, and before we turn it over to questions, and thank you. We spent a lot of time together, the three of us and the rest of the Bill BPS team, and I think it's incredibly important. So I think to Monica's last point about phases and, you know, this is a multi-year plan. It needs to have multi-year community engagement, but there'll be greater specificity on the near-term pieces early on than the longer-term pieces because some of those longer-term moves, for example, you know, depend on where property is acquired within the targeted areas or how some of the other-- some of the early moves roll out. So our goal would be to bring to the school committee for action those pieces-- those early action steps that must happen in order for later buildings to occur. So for example, if there's a building to be built, we would want that to be approved in concept so that we can then begin looking at site selection. Or if there is a building that cannot continue to be used, to make that determination so that we know where we now need property. So I think the intent is that there will be some early moves that we will want the committee to consider in December, but then for things that do not need to happen in that near a time, those would have continued engagement even after that point, and there might be another subsequent round of decisions that might come, say, in late spring 2019 that would impact the subsequent years. So, and you know, so we haven't-- we're not yet at the point where we can say there's going to be three phases or three decisions because we have learned about the iterative process of what gets built first versus what moves happen. So that's one. The second, just to go back to the community engagement, is that when we return on the 17th with a draft proposed plan that people can respond to and dig into, we will also at that point have an initial schedule of, as Monica said, sort of small, medium, and large, different kinds of communications that are both different in geography, in the type of the environment, the size of the gathering, and the specificity of the population. So as an example, as I was having breakfast with Jessica, BTU President Jessica Tang, Tuesday morning, and I was sharing this with her, and she said, "Okay, great. You know, when do teachers get it?" And I'm like, "How about Thursday, the 18th?" So I can make one modification on this schedule that the-- in that second row, that meetings will begin literally as soon as we have brought it publicly forward to the school committee. And so we've already organized two different teacher-focused conversations that the BTU president will host for us at the BTU Hall, at Florian Hall, so that we can bring this conversation directly to teachers. And we will be looking for multiple different populations and constituencies. And we're also looking to do some of these in school-based settings as well. So one school might host three or four different schools in their neighborhood. We might have school-parent councils. We're looking at our faith-based partners. So we're really looking-- and we will do the large town hall forums too, but, you know, based on past experience, we want to find lots of different ways to have that conversation.
Well, thank you, Ms. Peril. And Ms. Roberts, before we get started, I just wanted to ask you briefly. You mentioned that there's a second meeting coming up of the CEAC. Is that scheduled yet?
So we are working on getting a-- we have a date of October 15th, but we're actually trying to work on a sooner date since everyone was not able to attend the first meeting to make sure that we can update, but we'll share that out.
Great. And consistent with our pledge to try to abide by what open meeting law provides for, even though I don't believe we're actually strictly required to do that for this meeting, we're going to follow those procedures and get those meetings posted per a conversation I've had about that with the district. So we appreciate you doing-- taking that initiative and making sure that those meetings are in fact posted in advance. I did want to take one other moment just to recognize that Ms. Centoria Grant and the rest of your community engagement team is here in the back of the room tonight, and so we thank you for staying with us for this-- at this late hour, and we know that you will have--
Yes. Can all the community engagement and family engagement team wave and stand? Yes. Great. Thank you.
Quite a few of you.
They're going to be very busy.
Yes. This won't be your only late night in the near future. With that, thank you once again, and I do want to move on to Ms. Oliver Davila to kick us off with questions.
Excuse me. Thank you. So I just want to say that I'm very happy to see some new ideas that I think we've been saying for the last year. So thank you so much for brainstorming and being innovative. I do like the knocking on doors. I know that's old-school, but it works. And the rolling bowling pop-up, things like that. I think those are great. And I do really like that we will be moving fast because I think we've been talking about it forever. So I'm really excited about that. At the same time that fast is good, I do want to make sure that we have a conversation about what are our metrics in terms of what are the numbers that we feel comfortable getting feedback from community? Because I know-- I can't remember what-- yeah, it was the start times, I guess, when we said we had a certain number and we thought that that was a good number. I personally thought it was not a good number, but I just think we should have a discussion. And I loved, you know, the idea of having community partners that will run meetings. I think that's really the way that we're going to reach more people. And on the side note, I guess I would say that although this is great to use some of our community engagement staff, I still worry about the supports to school, and so I don't know how that balance will happen. And you know that I always say that I don't think it's only the community engagement staff office that should be doing family and community engagement. It should be everybody. But still, I know that schools do need support, so I just would want to hear a little bit more about how that balance is going to happen.
And if I can start by that, and then Monica, please weigh in, but I think as I arrived in July, that was also a concern for me. So as a longtime observer and fan of the family engagement work, I saw those shifts that had been made. And while the addition of the community engagement capacity is terrific, I think I at least shared the view that that was not meant to come at the expense of the family engagement priority. So I think, that said, those decisions were made by the time Monica and I sat down together to figure out how do we roll this forward. So we are looking at whether or not there are some internal shifts that can be made within the existing budget. That's still an ongoing conversation. It is another item that's high on the priority for consideration as we look forward to the budget cycle. And again, doing that in ways that is responsible to the overall budget, but clearly states that as a priority. I completely agree with the fact that that family and community engagement is not just the job of the community engagement or family engagement staff. I'll leave Monica to speak to that as effectively as she does, but I will say for the Bill BPS engagement, we've actually taken the opposite view, or actually a similar view, which is that it isn't just the job of the community engagement team to go out and present this, nor will it-- in fact, if we want to have as busy a schedule as we plan, can it be solely the Bill BPS team, the eight or nine of us who are actively engaged? So for all of our already tired colleagues in the room, we just want to mention that we've already talked about training and deputizing a large number of you, and the idea would be that there would be, you know, a content person and an organizing person at as many of these meetings as possible. And that's why I think having community hosts agree to host these meetings for us. So in a recent meeting at Acadon with community leaders from the Somali community, I immediately turned around and asked them if they would be willing to invite us back so that we could do a Bill BPS conversation. So we're looking at those where possible. But yes, it will take a lot of arms and legs. We'd also welcome any volunteers from the school committee. And actually, in all sincerity, we hope that you will be able to come out to as many of these conversations to hear live the kinds of questions and pushback and feedback that we're getting so that at the end of the day, it is not us coming to you in this chamber and saying, "We heard from this number and we did this many meetings," but you have been able to feel and touch the kind of questions and reactions we're getting as well.
I just want to say, I really liked that idea of having all staff. I hadn't even thought of that, but that is other duties as assigned. So I do agree with that. It is all hands on deck.
As many as we can recruit.
I think it's everybody. It's all of us. This is the only way that it's going to work. So I really appreciate that idea. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Just one quick one, and really to follow up a little bit on what Al said. So what will engagement success look like in terms of all of this? I mean, how are we building on what happened last year, but giving all of this, you know, how will we know we're successful? What's that balance between community members and parents and students so that we're hearing voices of people who will benefit from this in the long term?
So I think there are a few things. One, we need to think about numerically what turnout we're looking for, right? So we're doing that. I think we want to be sure that the representation of people we're bringing to the table looks like our students, and we fully understand that the communities in which some of our school buildings sit may not quite look like our students, but we want to make sure that we're engaging all of our stakeholders. Reaching all of our linguistic populations is really important, thinking particularly around, as we look at our prior data from our initial engagement around Bill BPS, we know that one of our most challenging pieces is that even the racial/ethnic mix wasn't quite what we would like it to be in terms of reflecting the district, so we want to do that as well. For me, part of what I think we've agreed to do as part of our work actually with the English Learner Task Force is to be collecting that data on who's coming to any district-run meeting. So we'll be looking at the actual numbers and reporting back to them on that. The other piece for me is the school-- The other piece for me is the school, making sure that we are engaging students, parents, and community together, not just any one set. So, we're still working on that. I think we're going to work with that with C E A C, but looking at our metrics will be an important piece of it.
I would just add to that, and piggybacking on what Alex Oliver Davila said, part of it is treating it almost like a campaign. If I was going to run for office someday, or if there's anyone in the audience or watching on TV-
If someone could imagine Rob Kinselva running for office.
Page 13, the Build B P S Community Engagement and Communication Plan is your blueprint to make that happen. And I agree with Alex that sometimes that old-fashioned way of taking our campaign to the streets to reach as many people as possible is the way to do it through door knocking. You know, community host is similar to house parties. Phone-a-thons is similar to phone banking. And that real down-home grassroots effort to take this campaign, this public awareness campaign, this engagement campaign, out of the bowling building into all the constituencies across the city is how we're going to be able to do exactly, Jerry, what you said, is reach all of the people we need to reach.
All right. Thank you.
The one other thing I do want to add is, as we assess what, how the public feels about what we've come out with, it's important to me that we have clearly, we have articulated our plan in such a way that everyone's on the same page, that there really is a shared understanding. I don't expect everyone to agree with the plan, but I do want us to be on the same page, having the same conversation, and making sure it's accessible to everyone so that they can really give their input. That, to me, is another important piece of looking at whether we're successful or not.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dr. Uriarte.
Okay. I did send you several questions that I had, so I'm going to go through some of them, and then, you know, others I'm hoping to discuss later. But, for example, in page three, from your perspective, thinking about this project, what does having an equity lens mean?
I will take a dive to that right away, but I think we are looking at, by enrollment and by demographics and concentration, and then looking specifically at student needs of special populations, so our English learners and our students with disabilities, as well as neighborhoods that have not, that have less access to quality seats, that have less access to schools close to home, is one of the lenses of equity that the data helps us see, and paired with demographics. And then, we are particularly concerned, and Nate, you should feel free to dive in here, but one of the things we're looking at is, if we're going to build a new building, then the, a school that moves into that building, and I'm thinking here particularly around the concentration of high-need students in our open enrollment high schools, the school that moves into that new building, there would be some expectation that they include special programs that meet the needs of those learners. Currently, they tend to be concentrated in a very small number of our lower-performing, under-enroll, and less desirable schools. By definition, if you're going to build a lovely new building right smack dab in a neighborhood where it's very much needed, or you're going to significantly renovate a usable building that could become another school, then I think the expectation is that they have to take and include, and find, even if they're a specialized program themselves, we see lots of school leaders willing to step up and take on programs of differentiated populations of students, and we think that needs to be a clear expectation and sort of built into who gets into a building. If there's two or three high schools, for example, that could all conceivably move into a building, that would be one of the expectations. And I think, Dr. Coleman, this goes back to your question earlier, you know, my example of an obstacle or a problem that we could really attack, both equity and program equity, student access distribution, and equity through this process.
Okay. But specifically in the issue of engagement, I think, you know, we've talked a little bit about the need to really think through how you're going to reach very diverse communities. Are the, you know, for example, in your team, what are the language capabilities in your team?
So, we have an Arabic speaker and a Spanish speaker on our team, and we have, across our team, we have other languages. So, we have a Somali speaker, we have Haitian Creole speakers, we have other Spanish speakers across the Office of Engagement.
So, you're attuned to the need to have that not be through a translator, but be direct?
Yes.
Okay. Also, on that page, I'm, my question is, why were, was the Office of English Language Learners not included?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the Build B P S team?
Yeah. No, and the team's created the second bullet.
Yeah.
So, my job in this group to talk about.
Yeah, I'm on the wrong page.
Given who we're dealing with, if enrollment is really the driving, the driving force of this, I would encourage you to include them.
And I would only add some to the language that I said when I first opened up my remarks was that this, while there has been key core members in a key subcommittee, the reality is that all the folks at the Boston Public Schools and key leadership have all played a major role in weighing in on a lot of the discussions that we've had. This isn't just, although we have, of course, like any organization, key people taking a leadership role in helping to plan it. I think the superintendent clearly articulated this is an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing. And even in this planning process around our equity piece, I think that many people from the team have been, the opportunity to work with Monica, her team, Nate, the superintendent, who's having conversations with our team daily, they all revolve around these issues of equity and specifically about Build B P S.
But I understand what you're saying, but the fact is that, you know, very seldom do you, does, you know, are they included in that type of decision-making? So, I guess what I'm saying is that they should be there in writing-
Yes.
-so that they also get that message.
You are absolutely right. And you should know, Dr. Uriarte, that when we're talking about special programs, we consistently and regularly are talking about programs for English learners as well as students with disabilities. You are right, it is not on that slide. It is on many other slides and documents, just to be very-
I'm just saying.
-clear. And when we pull the programming team in, and so, we've already had, just in a recent meeting, we were pulling in O E L as well as special education to look at exactly this programming component. And I think, you know, again, to the aspirations, I think, one of the things that is important about the potential for Build B P S is that there's an opportunity to meet aspirations that our students and families have and our communities have for the learning environments for our children, you know, in addition to figuring out where's the enrollment pattern and where do things go. One of the clear aspirations is more dual-language programming. That doesn't necessarily always require different space, but I think that's why we keep talking about this is both facilities and programming. And so, I think that too speaks directly to the needs of the office of, the need to have the Office of English Learners deeply involved as well.
And Dr. Uriarte-
Just a small recommendation?
Over the last year, when the, but there are two teams, two teams that have worked, sub-teams of part of Build B P S. The first is the Academic Program and Design Team. These are not conversations about E L L and about special education. These are, these are conversations with both of them. They, both Priya Tahiliyani and Cindy Nielsen, as well as members of their team, have been directly involved in the design, and in the conversations about what our programs need to be designed for, how we want them to look going in the future. The equity and opportunity gaps were explicitly mentioned in the formation of that sub-team, but they're not the exclusive members of that team. We made sure that there were representatives from the Office of English Language Learners and the Office of Special Education.
There are people, there are-
They're on that team, they're in the conversations, they have a very strong voice. And this is, so it's not just abstractly, we want to make sure we talk to them, it's very embedded in the program. We spend a lot of time with them on all of our, at every step in the process.
Okay. Nate, if you don't put it down, I'm going to ask you.
You got it.
Noted.
So, I was wondering, you, you know, in page four, talking about the previous, and this is something, I mean, I'll go through my questions, and then, what were the lessons from that past experience? And how much of that was good or bad or whatever? And then, you know, we can, we can go on. I have several questions about the different reports that, you know, that I would like, I want to clarify whether I've seen them in the past or not. The enrollment projections, is that the one that was produced? Because there were, there was one that had a lot of problems about where they saw enrollment increasing, and then, I think there was, James Jennings intervened, and so, we're talking about the post, the second one.
The second one, yeah, the work that Dr. Jennings had done to help us understand the big demographic trends for the city.
Okay. So, then, we're talking about, you know, when, because I keep seeing here shifting enrollment patterns. What are we talking about?
What we're talking about is, so, the 10-year demographic trends basically gives us a picture of the, in broad strokes, where do we see more kids or less kids? What we've really done with our planning and analysis team is help to understand how do choice patterns and choice options in the student assignment plan map out for access for certain parts of the city for schools close to home. And I think some of this was released in the Bari report on student assignment as well, but we know that there are places where we have a lot of students in parts of Dorchester and Matapan.
In Matapan.
We have a lot of students who live there. And when we look at the number of schools and the number of classrooms within a mile of their home, we know that we have significant constraints when it comes to assigning kids.
Okay.
So, what we're trying to do is map, what are the realities of what we see right now, and then, apply the demographic trends to say, is there any evidence from the work that Dr. Jennings did to say, this is going to get better on its own, that it's, or that this is a problem, it's going to continue to be a problem? And so, that's why at Build B P S, we need to invest our resources in solving that specific problem of capacity close to home.
The other, the other analysis that I would love to see, I mean, it's, so I have that report, so don't, is the student program needs and placement? Do you, that's an actual report?
That's not an explicit part of the report. It's discussed in the upcoming report that we're doing on the 17th, to be able to discuss, where do we have challenges in terms of placing new programs? The superintendent already mentioned that we know that we need to place additional programs for students with special needs. We know that we've needed to expand access to programs for English learners. Because of past programs and expansions for K to eights, and because of general constraints for assigning students and the new student assignment plan, we haven't been able to expand them in certain neighborhoods. We haven't been able to create the capacity we know we need. That, that's, when we start talking about some of the equity impact analysis, sometimes it's very practically, we need to address these issues first because they're critical needs for us.
Right.
And so, any proposals for expansions, any proposals for reconfigurations have to first answer the question, what's the disruption going to be for special education kids? What's the, what's the impact going to be for English learners? How are we going to better serve them at the end of the process than we're doing right now? And so, I think, I think you're going to be really excited about it. It's a long-term plan, so it's, it's the anticipation of changes that we've needed to make, but it's right at the center of any decision that we're making.
And we've been working with Nate for a long time, so now he speaks our language.
That's right.
No, but I think the concern-
That's a great compliment. Thank you.
The concern that I have about this is that there's some issues that are really critical to think through in terms of this. One is, you know, for English language learners, it's sort of the balance of choice versus program placement, because you have to, you know, by law, we have to give parent, all parents choice, so that you cannot sort of pigeonhole E L L parents into particular schools. But that is a balance because you also cannot have programs unless you have, you know, a group of students. So, I just, maybe we should engage in some little bit of discussion. Maybe when you come to the E L L task force, we can talk a little bit about that. My final question is in relationship to this slide, the slide in number seven, and I was wondering, you know, when I'm, when I see this, I'm saying, okay, what, for example, what's going to be the role of grade configuration in shaping this? When is that discussion going to take place? Is it before or during or after? Because my sense is that it has impact on, you know, how buildings are organized, et cetera. So, can we talk a little bit about that and how that whole process is going to be? This is not just about closing, you know, about, you know, moving schools or whatever. You know, there are some steps that have to be taken before. So, if you could, if you could talk about that and also about the lessons of the past process, I would really appreciate it. And thank you ahead of time.
Do you want to take a whack at that?
Sure. So, the, you know, there's been a number of discussions about getting to a place where we have a reduced number of grade configurations in the system.
Yes.
To make it more predictable and understandable for parents, to know what their K to 12 pathway is, and try and limit the transitions within that pathway for our students. In the past, we've done that, and I think the biggest last initiative to do that was the K to eight expansion that happened now over 10 years ago, I think, eight to 10 years ago. And, and part of that was a push by the community to get to K to eight without thinking through, I think, some of the implications for special education in particular. At the time, it was really at the beginning stages of our work with the Department of Justice on E L L programming. I think so much has changed around our understanding of programming needs over the last few years. But for special ed in particular, that we have a number of places where the K to eight system is not working for our special, our students in special ed programs. We need to correct that. So, I think you're going to see any changes to grade configurations, there's going to be a big public push, we've already heard it from a number of K fives, to just go ahead and add a fifth grade. It's, it's not that simple.
A sixth grade.
Add a sixth grade, excuse me. That was a big difference. So, if K to fives, add that sixth grade, and they think, you know, for a lot of families, they're thinking, it's, you know, it's easy, this is just an implication for my school. What we saw from the K to eight expansion in that part was that it was expanding K to eight also by sort of cannibalizing our standalone middle schools. And what we saw were schools like the Rogers was probably the most stark example where we saw three or four years of million-dollar budget cuts due to three or four years of significant enrollment declines as K to eights grew, until finally, it got to the place where we knew we could no longer provide the right educational opportunities, and the Rogers were closed. We don't want to be in a situation where we're expanding something and ignoring the fact that there's, the system needs to work in concert. So, you're going to see neighborhood plans, and we're going to try and do it in a way that eases transitions for both school communities and students and creates those pathways over time.
I think the one thing I will add is that, that is exactly right. We also respect the fact that there are places where the K to eight, nine to 12 pathway is working. So, I think we are also not expecting that this is a unilateral, one-size-fits-all, and everything is going to go in that K to six, seven, 12, or the K to eight, nine to 12. I think it is very much about the contour and shape of each of the neighborhoods and the set of pathways and feeder schools. And also, one of the other realities of this work is that we will be working with the existing stock of buildings. Yes, there will be new buildings built. Yes, there will be some major renovations, but we will also be sustaining and working with a number of our schools. So, we have a bunch of schools that, you know, won't, won't be able to go seven to 12. They would only be right for a nine to 12. And so, we're going to have, and that, in some of the K to eight neighborhoods, that's a two-campus K to eight, and in other places, it's a better option to go K six, seven, 12. So, there will not be a uniform approach, but there will be a thoughtful, data-driven, and really context, you know, sort of shaped with the personality of the schools and communities that are already there in terms of where we see the best possible route forward. That is why we want to put a concrete plan out for people to respond to, because someone might say, now, actually, we're not sure we like that fix. Could it work this way? And then, we can come back with answers and say, we tried that model, that doesn't work, but this one might. So, that's really the conversation we're hoping to have.
But with the objective of narrowing the number?
It will narrow the number. It won't wipe them out and make, I mean, Boston is not a good place for uniformity. I mean, any of us who have lived here for a long time can probably acknowledge that. And, but I think narrowing the options or having, again, more predictable or slightly more logical for the context of that group of schools in a neighborhood is what we're driving toward.
Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Yar. I'll tell you, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Superintendent Pearl, I have to say, what you just said is one of the most encouraging things I've heard all night. For you to acknowledge that we are a system that needs a range of options for parents and for students and that one size does not fit all. And, you know, Mr. Cuda, when you referred to a few years ago, the expansion to K-8, that was in many cases driven by parents and school communities who didn't want their child going to middle schools or didn't want them going at that point, at that age, to a bigger high school. And they liked the education they were getting in the K-5, and they said, well, if I can just stay here a few more years. And yes, it was a, a great attempt, and it has worked for some communities. For others, though, they're struggling with two buildings or three buildings. Or, you know, I think of the Manning and JP that would love to be K-8. It physically doesn't work. And so, now they may end up with a building in another part of Jamaica Plain, and is that really the same school? And yet, we've had a lot of talk at this body and with the previous superintendent about the need of cutting down grade configurations. No academic research was pointed to us that said, K-6, 7 to 12 is the model, or K-8, 9 to 12 is the model. What we have seen is research that says middle schools aren't working. And that to have a blended approach in a city that likes blended approach, so if you are a parent who likes a K-8 model and then a 9 to 12 for your child, you have options available. And yet, if you want a K-6 and take some of our better-performing high schools that people are choosing and allow them to expand to 7 and 12 as a way to fill some space issues, I think that's a win-win. And so, I love the fact that you came right out and acknowledged this because quite frankly, no one sitting in your seat in the past few years has said that as clearly as you just did. And so, people are going to hear that and hold you to that commitment, but I think it's critical because I personally, and I see other school members, school board members shaking their head here, having a blended approach on that. In some communities, K-8 works, and yet, others moving from K-5 to K-6 and then maybe expanding some really successful high schools and instead of now being 9 to 12, potentially being 7 to 12, and working with some of our middle schools that have excess space but haven't had parents choosing them, I think could be a win all the way around. So I'm really, really pleased to hear that. I, beyond that, I just wanted to make three quick points. Mr. Consalvo, when you likened this to a political campaign, you were right in mind what I was thinking about. And yet, there's something really important to remember when you think of this as a political campaign. Tip O'Neill said, all politics is local. So when it comes to schools, everyone is, no one is focused on the process. This is all about process right now. Everyone wants to know, how's this going to impact my school that my student goes to or that I work in? And that's what people are weighted, forbated, waiting, forbated breath in. And this will very quickly evolve into a situation of, why isn't my school being taken care of first? And so, we have to be prepared for that. And we have to be prepared for not responding to those that scream the loudest, but really having, I, it's my own personal opinion, I suspect the majority of the members, if not unanimously the members, feel that we have to have a very, very strong equity lens on this. Because for too long, this city has been helter-skelter or herky-jerky in how we have made investments. And we have communities that we all know have been marginalized. And so, we have to have a strong equity lens and we have to have that done up front. So when we, and we have to have people beyond the district who are specialists in equity lens, look at that, look at that and get their feedback on it. And I'm going to give you a quick example why that's so important. When we proposed changes in start times, we belatedly put out an equity analysis. And then, we were surprised when some members of the community said, we still don't agree with it, right? And so, I think it's important that we do an equity analysis and, and get outside our sphere of comfort and have some people look at it and say, does this make sense? Because people, as much as they focus on their individual school, they're also fair-minded. And I, and I revert back to a conversation that Dr. Johnson and I had several years ago about Walk Zone in Charles Town, when people were fighting so hard for it, until we talked to them about how they had more options than people in Roxbury had. And we gave examples, a drawing, a circle, a one-mile around, and what options they had and what options others had. And we're like, we live in a city. I don't live in the city of Charles Town, I live in the city of Boston. I pay taxes to Charles Town, uh, to, city of Boston, not to Charles Town. We all choose to live in a city for a reason. And people understand that and they want everyone's child to have the same options that their child have. And so, I think we have to do an equity lens before, be comfortable, really test it and put that out right at the beginning when we're putting out what the steps are. And I think people will understand that and be more willing to accept it, particularly if they see it in stages. So that's one point. The second is, we cannot get away with just saying, here's the first stage, and then we're going to be tackling others down the line. Some schools will be willing to wait if they understand why. So I'm going to give an example. We just moved Boston Arts Academy to the Cleveland Building. We're going to have the groundbreaking for their brand-new building in a couple of weeks. We did improvements to the Cleveland Building to be ready for BAA. When they move out three years from now, I can think of a half dozen high schools in this city that would love to have that building and want it, would want it a little bit more cleaned up for them. But if you say to some, okay, so BAA is here, when they move to that, then this is going to be freed up and then you're going to be slaughtered to be consideration for that, people are willing, my conversation with some school leaders is they believe their communities would be willing to wait in some cases if they see what the end game is. And they believe it's being done fairly across the district, that favorites are not being played. So they need to understand the multiple steps, even if not, everything is clear, crystal clear down the end. And the last piece is, this is not just to me about building brand-new or substantial renovations, to use the example that you said, Mr. Cuda, of either the Dearborn is the brand-new or the substantial renovation to the Burke a few years ago. There were, people are going to want to hear that work is going to be done on their schools. And yes, we have boilers and windows and those type of things. But it also comes down to the basics, bathrooms, kitchens, and yes, climate control. Getting ready for what's going on where we have 90-degree, I don't know, anyone who walked through downtown today, but I was absolutely soaked from the heat, not from the rain, by, you know, in 15 minutes. It was 85 degrees out today. And it's going to be, continue to be in, in September and October, and it's going to be in, in June. And, you know, I was speaking with some new teachers from Carver the other day. I mentioned Carver, really about the Constitution thing. And they have a brand-new elementary school. So I asked them, is it air-conditioned? And they said, no. And I was shocked. I said, a brand-new school, it's not air-conditioned? They said, it's climate-controlled. They said, they're using a system where it's dehumidifiers. And they, between, between that and air circulation, it's going to keep the room at a constant 72 degrees. I said, well, how was it the first week of school? They said, beautiful. And some of the Boston teachers who were there, including one from the Edwards, said to me, boy, we have a flat roof. Why can't we be putting solar up there and using it to reduce our energy? So thinking in terms of overall climate control and energy efficiency, but bathrooms and kitchens, those are the critical things that if, if students hear that's going on in their building, it may not need a massive renovation, or it may not need a brand-new, but getting at the critical things for all of our students would be huge. So, to reiterate, you know, all politics is local. People are going to focus on this once a proposal's on the table for their school, and we're going to hear from school communities, as we have already heard from at least one, of we should be first in line.
Oh, we've heard from more than one.
Yes. Well, I'm talking about school committee members. This week, a number of us heard from a school community saying, we should be first. And I understand that. I understand that advocacy. But we have to do it through an equity lens. We have to double-check it, triple-check that, and then make sure that we're communicating to that folks across the board, number one. Number two, we have to understand the multiple steps. And number three, this isn't just about building new or substantial renovations, but also hitting the key basics for every single one of our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. If I may, just quickly, working backwards up, so on page eight, under the Build BPS project categories, very specifically, this had not previously been put on the table, but to your point, in working with the team, we have added in climate control and energy efficiency. There are a lot of different, I'm very delighted to hear about the dehumidifier because my plan right now is, was to talk to the Mayor's Office of New Urban Mechanics and see what they can come up with, as well as our city's environmental chief, to make sure that addressing climate control in our buildings is part of the city's climate agenda, but that we are considering it in light of investments. And that's a really good example of the choices and trade-offs we will be making. And I think looking, again, with an equity lens, a data lens, a need lens, which are, which buildings are most vulnerable to heat? Which ones are the worst situated? Which ones can only be AC'd? Which ones might be able to be dehumidified? And look at, what does that investment look like and what can we not build if we do that? And how do we balance those? Has to be an explicit part of the conversation.
All right.
So, I think that is, that's the first point.
And, and I just want to say about that, so, I saw the videotape of a, a community conversation about one of the buildings we renovated in the past few years. And we did not put climate control in that building.
Correct.
And I saw the videotape of the, a community conversation, and a representative of the then, District, a then-representative of the District, said, in response to apparent question of, was it going to be air-conditioning? No, because it's a Boston School Committee policy that we don't air-condition buildings unless they have summer programs or used as community centers.
I'm not aware that there is such a policy.
Sullivan, there is not a policy. We researched it.
And if you, if there was such a policy, the Build, the, the current Build BPS planning team was planning on coming to you all to say, this can't be our policy because it has changed so dramatically even in the past three years. That doesn't mean we're going to miraculously be able to AC 125 buildings tomorrow, but it has to be an explicit part of the conversation so we can make choices and trade-offs.
It should be a standard part of the renovations. It is, it is not a policy because we researched it. But the fact was that members of the facility teams were saying that in community meetings. So, in fact, should be in this, and I'm glad you put it in, that climate control is something that, and, and energy efficiency is part of the standard things that we're planning upon doing. Thank you.
What's that?
Yep. And the last thing I will say, just because it's an important point, is that we are planning on putting out an arc that is our farthest-out view of sort of the eight to 10 years. However, what I, what I meant when I said in sections, it is that we will put that out there, but there could be more iteration the further out you get. But we will put a vision and the, a possible path out for each neighborhood and over the multiple years.
Thank you. And, and my final comment, by the way, and I should have said before, I want to compliment you on the community engagement advisory council you put here, put together. And particularly, the willingness to include folks who traditionally hold our feet to the fire, but not, haven't, have not necessarily been at the table and helping this plan and, and provide solutions. And I think that's good. I think that's critical. That's a, that's a, I'm glad to see the district doing that and reaching out to folks to help us solve the engagement question here and make sure that we're having different voices represented at the table. So thank you for that.
To your point, Mr. O'Neil, I believe that group continues to be in formation. And if I'm not mistaken, there's additional invites out there. And out of, out of abundance of caution, the district has erred on the side of not including names prior to confirming their participation. So there'll be names over time that'll be continued to be added as well.
I love it. I love it.
Dr. Coleman.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. This is great work, and this was, actually helped me understand the process much better than I had before. So, thank you. I'm very excited about particularly the community engagement piece going forward. But I have a couple, I'm struck by what I feel is a lack of a big vision for 21st century learning, which should really govern this conversation. So it feels a little carton horse to me. And there's a lot, we have a lot of building issues, we have a lot of practical issues that I think are addressed very, very well, in numbers four to seven. But 1, 2, 3, and on, on page 5, it helped me to hear about the expanding access to high-quality schools closer to home was about doing an equity analysis about where kids are now. But we know that what's going to drive us improve is school improvement. That's an academic issue with more, more than geography. Create clear educational pathways, pre-K to graduation seems to me an academic decision. That's a, that's a learning decision about what's the best configuration for kids moving towards the 21st century, what that will look like, and then reducing the number of transitions. You know, and it feels to me it's going more into the practical, how are we going to take care of the buildings, not, what is our big vision for, for the district at an academic level? So, you know, in terms of sitting back and thinking, and I know there's some urgency, we want to get forward, and there are a lot of practical issues we can address, but I would want to, think that we want to put some of this conversation back into the academic side of the house, which I'm here, that you, you've had included, and you've had those conversations. I would like to see them more highlighted, that this is what our big vision is. This is what we really want to happen and how people will learn in the 21st century. So when people move to Boston, this is how we're going to have a diverse community in Boston, and they're going to learn and prove this way. And then, here's how we're going to build buildings and allocate resources to make that happen. You guys don't have the answer to that. I think that's on us.
Maybe they could cook something up by October 17.
Well, see, that, I'm, clearly, I'm not 100% comfortable with a timeline. I know we, people say we want to rip this Band-Aid off, but that assumes that someone knows the answers.
But I, I
And I'm not sure that's clear.
I think we could take the opportunity while doing this to ask those questions as well from the community, especially from the young people of how should it feel? So I agree with you, it's very, you know, bricks and mortar, but what should, what should it feel like? What should it look like? How do students want to learn? What kinds of innovative, you know, things we could be doing? So I agree.
So I'm going to be supervising a dissertation this year where we're going to be asking a bunch of middle school aged African-American boys, what is the school that they think would serve for them? And part of the reason we do that is that not many people have asked that question of the kids. And we don't, I'm not sure we have the answers, but I'm, I just want to put that caution on the table, that it should be driven by academic learnings. And if it's already there, highlight it in the conversation as, as Dr. Yarde suggested earlier.
The, the other thing is that there are points in the process where we get more specific with what learning will look like for individual programs. So, if you think about the MSBA process for a new building, our first step is to put in a statement of interest that says, we're interested in exploring a new school building for the Boston Arts Academy. That's phase one. We, we outline the big-picture needs, why we prioritize the Boston Arts Academy. They then accept it. We go through a process of feasibility that, and eligibility that says, okay, what's the, what's the needs of the community? What's the vision for learning? What's the space that you need for that community? I think that's the point at which we can start to get much more creative in design and thinking through and getting feedback from middle schoolers who are saying, what do you want this classroom to look like? What, and how's, how's it going to be different than the classrooms we built back in 1940? And, and, and it's at that point that we say, you know, in a 10-year plan, we need to build a new elementary school. And at this point in the process is when your community is going to engage very deeply about what the learning is going to be in that school and how the facility can shape the environment. In the same way that when we decided, when the city decided to build the bowling building, they sat down with every single department and said, okay, how do you use space? And then, they came back with a plan that said, here's how you guys can change your work environment. The same thing we'll do with all of our schools, but it's, you start by saying, we want to build something new. And then, you get to a place where we get to be much more creative and much more visionary for individual schools.
And, you know, on that note, I just want to, you know, thank the present, presenters for, you know, as you've heard from a number of the members here tonight, just coming to us with a clear vision and framework for what this conversation is going to look like. You've heard us obviously loud and clear over the past, I don't know how many months and probably stretching into a year now since the facilities master plan was first presented to us, that, you know, we want, and you hear that conversation out in the community as well, we want that specificity with respect to how we're going to continue to engage and how we're going to lay out this plan. And so, we're really looking forward to hearing what your best thoughts are on that, as informed by the way that you've engaged with the community over the last year-plus to, to call out some of those initial pre-proposals. And come back to us and talk a little bit more about what that means to the present state of the schools and how we're going to make that happen. So thank you again. We'll look forward to seeing you, and I believe it's three weeks. And And that will be that. So our final report this evening is a presentation on the superintendent search update. And I've been eating fruit snacks to fortify myself with sugar and, so I can be on the ball with my, my part in the, the presentation this evening. But in any case, I, I have distributed for you a memorandum that's going to walk you through, it's in your packets, walk you through some of the comments I'm going to make tonight. And this memorandum is a summary of a lot of the conversation we've been having since we go, going back to July. And if you recall, back in those July meetings, I pledged that the committee would announce a search process during the September meetings that occurred shortly after the resumption of the school year. And the committee first discussed this search process in open session during our planning retreat that occurred in this room last Thursday. And tonight I present for your consideration the product of those three months of research and consultation. And that consultation has taken place with a variety of folks. Each of my fellow community members, the mayor's office, community stakeholders, support organizations including the Council of Great City Schools and Massachusetts Association of School Committees, among many others. And the memorandum in your packets tonight describes the process ahead and initiates the naming of the search committee that shall, shall be empowered to lead the search for a final slate of candidates that will be considered by the committee, the mayor, and the public at large, with a final selection to be made by the committee itself. So as we discussed at the retreat, the district's well positioned right now to capitalize on our recent collective experiences with the 2014 search and the materials that are now available for our use during this round. And likewise, the process that we envision for this search positions the district to take advantage of the market for large urban school super, district superintendents that typically develops in the December to February timeframe each winter. And would of course, I want to emphasize, result in the hiring of a school leader for the academic year 1920, or possibly even sooner. So specifically, I'm going to ask the committee to take action on naming a search committee at our next meeting, which is, will take place on October 10th. And I'm going to return to the committee's composition in just a moment. But I do want to take a moment and talk a little bit more about how the search process will play out over these next couple of months. And so once that committee is in fact named at the next school committee meeting, the search committee will then begin to solicit and review potential search firms and other consultants that can provide recruiting or human resources administrative services to support the search. The search committee will then present, select and present a search firm or consultant to the school committee for approval. Next, the search committee will hold a series of public hearings throughout the city to solicit public feedback and input into the desired candidate's qualities. Community and district partners will be invited to present, and the public at large will have opportunities to comment. This will be helpful for groups that, who, excuse me, who may feel that they were not fully represented on the search committee due to size limitations, and to make sure that their voices are still heard very early in the process. And I want to note and emphasize and stress that this committee has made clear that opportunities for youth voice as well as non-English speakers need to be heard and must be included in this phase. Now, building on the input from the search committee public hearings, the search committee will then draft a job description and present it to the Boston School Committee for approval. It's anticipated that a job description will be approved by the end of November. The search committee will then issue a call for candidates and actively work to create as wide of a pool of potential candidates as possible. As I earlier noted, it's anticipated that a call for candidates in early December will put the district in an ideal position to take advantage of available candidates. The search consultant will then conduct initial vetting and background checks on candidates and will then assist the search committee in its work to select candidates for initial interviews. The search committee will then conduct a round of interviews in executive session to preserve candidate confidentiality at the initial entry level and select an appropriate number of suitable financial, excuse me, final candidates for public presentation. And it's expected that the search committee will operate under a timeline that will allow for the presentation of final candidates in early 2019, with additional opportunities at that point to solicit public input on the finalists. Please note however, and I want to emphasize this again, given our past experiences, the timeframes can and will be adjusted if necessary based upon the, the response to the call for candidates in order to best ensure that Boston has obtained the highest caliber of candidates for consideration as our district's next permanent superintendent. Now returning again to the, the search committee's composition, Mayor Walsh and I have asked our colleague Ms. Alexander Oliver-Davila, the executive director of Sociedad Latina, to co-chair the search committee. We've also, and she's accepted provisionally, we still got a vote on it. We've also asked Dr. J. Keith Motley, the former chancellor of the University of Massachusetts at Boston, to assist Ms. Alexander Oliver-Davila as the second co-chair in the search. In your packets, I provided, you know, both these individuals need no further introduction, but I've provided biographical sketches for each individual to give you a little bit more background. And it's anticipated that once we move into the latter half of next week, the remainder of the search committee membership, which is still being crafted with your input to capture a wide cross-section of our district's constituencies, will be announced and will be made explicitly available for the public prior to the vote on October 10th. Now additionally, I want to note that consistent with past searches, several regional city, regional and city foundations are considering or have already stepped forward to provide financial support for the search expenses in order to minimize the expense of this search on the, the district's coffers. More details about these, this support specifically will be announced as these commitments are finalized. And with that, I want to take a pause on, and take a final note on what this upcoming process looks like. I know each of you will agree with me when I say the choice of our next permanent leader for this district is going to be our most important upcoming decision. And during this time however, I think you also acknowledge that the work of the district goes on. We have a capable interim superintendent in place who's attacked her role with a sense of urgency that reflects the approach that many of us and our teachers, our administrators and our school leaders and our staff bring to our schools and our children each day. I want to thank those teachers, those school leaders, those central office administrators and that staff, and remind them that this committee remains present to lead on this search, but also to continue supporting your work and your daily work to close opportunity achievement gaps and improve outcomes for all students. I know each of my fellow committee members share that view, and I remain honored to work with each of you to find the next great superintendent of the Boston Public Schools and to continue our great strides towards providing the best education possible for the city of Boston and the children in the city of Boston. So with that, I'd like to open it up now to questions and comments from the committee. Ms. Robinson.
First of all, I just want to say congratulations to Alex. And I think between you and Keith Motley, that is a wonderful leadership team. And look forward to whatever ways that we can be supportive to you this process.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And thank you, Ms. Oliver-Davila, for taking this on. Mr. O'Neil.
So I want to echo that, I, I'm not quite sure, I'll say congratulations. I'll say thank you. Thank you. Dean Coleman and I know how hard the work is in front of you, but also how rewarding it is. And there's obviously a tremendous amount of attention is paid to this, both in this city and quite frankly nationally. Boston is a leader in education, so thank you for your willingness to serve and thank you to Dr. Motley as well, who has been such a tremendous partner with the district over the years, has mentored so many of our students, knows us extraordinarily well and has spent more time on his hands now than he did a few years ago. So delighted that he's willing to step right back into the arena to help us out because as, you kind of think of a better caliber person, and the two of you together are a wonderful team. So a couple of quick points, Mr. Chair, I look forward to the rest of the selection of the search committee because obviously a lot of eyes will be placed on that. There's a lot of folks that have interest in this from a variety of different constituencies. And they look to see that there are their people on there that they respect and will understand and make sure different viewpoints are represented. Second is, I think the community process to listen and figure out the characteristics that we want in our next superintendent is going to be critical, as is the report back from the search committee to this committee and us voting on it, on what we're looking for in a superintendent. And particularly, you know, from my viewpoint, I want to see experience in, in the role at another district with a record of achievement. I think Boston deserves that and can definitely get it. And then third, I think it is critical that we make it abundantly clear, I thank you for laying it out today, but I think we need to continue to make it abundantly clear that we want a new leader in place by the end of this school year, ready to go for the end of next year. We're right on time cycle for that, we're doing okay, as you laid out here, and I thank you for that. And we have the record of the last time we did a search that this worked right about this. But we need to be clear in our dealings with folks that our expectation is that A, we want a leader in place next year, we want a record of experience, we want to listen to the community, because we want buy-in on both the process and the ultimate outcome, which puts wind at the back for a new superintendent. So, Mr. Chair, I applaud for what, I applaud you for what you've laid out today. Ms. Oliver-Davila, thank you for your willingness to serve along with Dr. Motley and look forward to, as Ms. Robinson said, I look forward to helping however I can.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Are there other, other comments or questions?
I was just going to thank Alex for stepping up.
Do you want to say a few words?
No, I just, no, I will be calling on all of you, don't worry.
You have our numbers.
Especially you guys with all your experience, so, and I do want to say thank you to Keith also for taking this on. And I look forward to hearing from the community, so, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
I want to say my thank you, congratulations and condolences. As you go for this. And, you know, I've said this in the last meeting, and, and I just want to repeat this because I think it's something that we need to consider, and I don't mind being rejected on a regular basis for this. But the idea that, is there a point at which we may want to empower the committee to decide that there is a candidate of such measure and quality, and it's a hard thing to define upfront, but you know that this would be a great candidate for us, but it would adversely affect their professional life if they became known as a candidate prior to a certain point, that we may want to move on quickly. And would we be able to empower the committee to collectively make a decision or a choice that they could make a recommendation that, to continue the process with more confidentiality until that was decided? I'm just putting on the table because we've gotten so much feedback about what it takes to get some of the leading potential leaders in the country to join, who may be sitting superintendents or involved in other expectations that come in public would adversely affect them, so they were drawn to our detriment. I would like to find a way to include that in our conversation.
We've gone back and forth on this, and I, I think it's a really important question. I mean, I, my experience was different from the experience in the last search committee. You know, when we, and, and, you know, we may say it didn't work, but the idea here is, you know, up to, where's this, where does engagement, when is engagement really necessary and, and important? And, and that's a question that I think we need to answer because if the answer is it has to be an open process of interviewing, then you're, you know, what we're saying is, you know, there, there are a lot of people are not, you know, some people are not going to go through. On the other hand, we want somebody that doesn't want to go through a process of community engagement. And, and that's, you know, that's the, the set of questions that I think we need to, we need to be thinking about. I, to tell you the truth, I, I'd rather have the, the community engagement be very forceful and strong at the beginning. And if, if you have a candidate, I mean, if you, and sometimes it happens, you have something that's really stellar, then you, you may want to have maybe a broader group of people and just the search committee, you know, sort of become, you know, be part of, of that selection or, or be part of the people that you go to, to talk to. But again, I mean, that's something that, I don't know whether you, you all want us to sort of talk about that as a policy or whether that's something at the school, that the search committee should decide.
Well, something I think I would suggest in this conversation is, you know, we really don't know, we have some sense of what the market might be. You know, there's the rumor mill that runs through the, the conversations that are had at the, at the national level about who might be interested in moving around, who might be, who might be on the market this next year, so on and so forth. And so there's a little bit of, and there's also the current searches that you find in other cities as well that have identified candidates. So, you know, there's an ability to some extent to divine, you know, who might be out there. And, and, you know, the initial signs that we're getting in those conversations and what we're hearing is that there's going to be a good crop out there, you know? So I, I think that the struggle that we have, and I, you know, you, we've all identified, and I mean, I think every piece of the conversation that we've had tonight, regardless of the report subject, speaks to the need and the value for community engagement and involvement in the decision-making process. And so, you know, for me to be able to wrap my head around the idea that, you know, a search would be shortcut and internalized in order to protect one candidate, that candidate would have to be so awe-inspiring and head and shoulders above, you know, the individual, the other individuals that might be available as to provide cause for us to be able to make that kind of turn and then turn around to the community once presented and make that argument to say, you know, this is, you know, this is somebody that walks on water essentially. And so, you know, I, I approach it from that standpoint. I also approach it from the standpoint of just a common, a general organizing principle I have around work, which is everyone is essentially replaceable, right? The idea that we would have someone, that we could ever find somebody that would be that silver bullet candidate, I think we'd, we'd end up going a little bit down a path that's not going to really serve us well. Because there are a lot of qualified candidates out there, and this is kind of getting back to this conversation that we've had about who might be available that have the experience in a, in a large urban setting, that know ELL issues, that know SPED issues, that know, have known how to reorganize a district. And so to think about it in that sense, to know that we've got to have, we're probably going to have a couple of options that we're going to want to dig into a little bit further and say, you know, is the fit right for Boston? And is the fit right for the specific needs that we have in this district? I'm hopeful for marrying that process to the, the open public search process that will need to be able to vet exactly who it is that, that is going to work in this, this environment that we all live in, is going to be, is going to result in the right, the right selection for this district. And if we fail at that, then we're back to a square one and we might want to reevaluate it at that point. But I think, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
I, I, you know, in all due respect, Mr. Chair, there are people, you know fundamentally, I'm in agreement with you. You know fundamentally, that's where I am. And so, but I've been convinced by outstanding people, you know, very important people in the field, that having a failsafe built into the process that everyone knows may happen, may serve us.
Understood. Other questions and thoughts?
But then he goes to his, the perspective of marrying these two. You know, at what point do you act so that you don't have a failed search? And, you know, that's the, that's the problem. See, where, where I participate, I participated after a failed search. Two years of failed search. So, you know what I mean? So that, that, you know, that could happen also, you see, and that's.
And you're referring to when Dr. Johnson was hired.
Dr. Johnson was hired.
Yes.
I'm only up for a year. I told it was a year, that's what we're doing, we're going to make it happen.
Well, it has.
So the, the, and A theory approach would be to say, we go, we use the process, and we're just saying that, as articulated by the chair, which I think is a very reasonable and, and normal and a good process, you, you know you're going to have a group of people who've seen a lot of resumes, seen a lot of people, and say, can we empower that group of citizens to say, this person may not walk water, but they are head and shoulders. And the only way to go forward is to enhance the cone of confidentiality for that person. Can we give them that permission or not? I mean, that, that's what I'm saying.
As they say in the South, we'll burn that bridge when we get to it.
Well, in the Middle States, we cross those.
Well, what I.
Wow, I don't want to go down that road.
Well, but, but I think that it may be a worthwhile discussion in the committee, at what point is it February, is it March, you know, is it at the beginning when you're?
Indeed, and, and, you know, I think that's, you know, I, I think that's really what we're kind of getting at, you know, so, you know, when I, when I hear this idea of the closed search, it, the idea of it without, you know, having that, you know, failsafe candidate in front of us to weigh that against versus, you know, the need for, the default of a, a public search here, it, it's hard for us to understand. But as we move through this process, knowing our timeline, knowing our desire to have a permanent superintendent in place for the next school year, that, that, we're going to need to be cognizant of that timeline, and whether, and at what point we need to reassess what our needs are and what our environment is to, to seek alternative candidates.
I think the other, the other thing that is also an issue for me is sort of the require, the requirements and the, the level of person that we're, that we're thinking about, from my, from my perspective, our last search did not produce what we needed. And, and we, you know, and there were a lot of people, very knowledgeable people around us that were telling us that, you know, so that, you know, where do we, you know, at what point do we say, wait a minute, we have to do X, Y, and Z? Again, that's the kind of thing that a search committee has to work on, but I, I would like to see a better pool than what, what we had at the end of the last search. That would be my.
This is the urgent work that lies ahead. Other thoughts or questions?
You're looking at me like saying, I'm being restrained.
You're being restrained.
There's a diversity of opinion.
I mean, I, I remember, you know, it came out in the paper and everything, but yeah, it's, you know, and they were rough actually.
Well, we won't revisit the past, we're talking about the future now.
I love levels of disagreements.
Are there other questions about the search that's coming up? Well, I'm going to look forward to coming back to you with a public announcement about the remainder of the search committee members over the next week, and then we'll look forward to taking action on that search committee at our next meeting on October 10th. We'll move on now to public comment on reports, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Our first speaker is Peggy Wiesenberg, and she'll be followed by Jane Miller.
Good evening. I am testifying after listening, and I'm still listening, and we'll be back on the 17th to see the 10-year plan, not chunks of the plan, but the 10-year plan. I want to talk briefly about the superintendent's search. As I said last time, you, this body has the authority to select the next superintendent. I looked last night at the city charter, and also about the school committee, and I noticed that two members' terms are expiring. Of course, those individuals are free to, you know, apply, and there may be another opening. There's a nominating committee that's set up in law to have certain representatives, and those representatives have two terms. One of the representatives is selected by the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, and Sam Tyler was here earlier this evening, and I did talk to him. I noticed that that representative, who was in his first served one year of the two-year term, is the husband of the interim superintendent. He has resigned from that selection nominating committee that will nominate two or three people to be on the committee that hires the superintendent. So that brings me to Reverend Bodrick's statement earlier, which was reiterating the statement of a coalition of civil rights and community groups, that it's important really for the mayor or the interim to let us know, and let the pool, the market out there of people who, you say, are on the market and are looking, if there, if the interim is not going to apply for the, the position. Because I agree, we need a diverse and rich pool, there's talent out there, but I fear that people will not come forward if there's a nod to the interim.
Thank you.
So I share that with you to ponder as you move forward, and I, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesenberg.
Yeah.
Our next speaker is Jane Miller, and she'll be followed by Megan Wolf.
Hi, I'm Jane Miller. I'm a BPS parent and a founding member of Start Smart BPS. I feel like I wouldn't fit in tonight if I didn't mention something about community engagement. So, I just want to say, it doesn't take a doctorate to know some of the basics. I placed a phone call on Monday asking a specific question about community engagement to the community engagement office. It's, I don't know, after 10:00 on Wednesday, I haven't gotten a phone call back. A tip would be to respond to your parents, it's really simple. But what I'm really up here to talk about tonight is the superintendent's search. Start Smart signed on to the September 12th statement regarding the superintendent's search, and I thank you for your response and for providing a timeline tonight, I really appreciate that. However, I do need to address some comments that telling someone not to apply would be autocratic. According to your bylaws, you can and should define the qualifications for a superintendent. And so while I truly appreciate Ms. Perrell stepping in temporarily, do our children not deserve an experienced, licensed, tested superintendent? Shouldn't your request for these qualifications preclude Ms. Perrell from applying? Additionally, we requested a true authentic community engagement, and let me remind you that although your bylaws state that in the event that a superintendent resigns, you will name an acting superintendent, you allowed the mayor to name the superintendent and do a press tour before your vote. My concern about your report is ultimately transparency and community engagement. You note that you will strive to make the process as transparent as possible, yet you also note the search committee makeup was done, past tense in your letter, Mr. LaCanto, in discussion with the mayor, and that these members will be finished with their training, leading me to believe that the search committee has already been formed, or should I say appointed, like you. You note the superintendent's search will be your most important decision in the coming months. As a parent of BPS children and as a resident of this city, I agree, yet you seem to have chosen a search, search committee already without reaching out to the public and letting them know that it was open for application. We are almost 100 days out from Dr. Chang's public resignation, and we are no closer to transparency and authentic engagement than we were on June 22nd.
30 seconds.
And while I sincerely appreciate your work here, I mean, I do understand you volunteer your time and that you do have lives and families outside of here. In your own words, LaCanto, Mr. LaCanto, everyone is essentially replaceable, so I am beginning to wonder if maybe we would be better with an elected committee. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Megan Wolf, and she'll be followed by John Mudd.
Good evening, my name is Megan Wolf, I'm a former BPS parent and a member of Quest, but my comments tonight are my own. Thank you for the presentation on the superintendent's search committee, and thank you also for the transparency about the financial support of foundations in the process. I hope we'll also have access to information about who those foundations are and how much they're contributing. I'd like to note that this is not common practice, my understanding is that most superintendent searches are funded by districts themselves. Given the unusual circumstance, however, I think it's important to have some kind of firewall between the funding of the search and undue influence in the process. For this reason, and in order to honor the voices and opinions of those not helping to fund the search, I'd like to suggest that any member or representative of a foundation funding the search explicitly not have a seat on the search committee. This would avoid the possible appearance of undue influence on the choice of a superintendent. As a side note, I'm not naive enough to think that funding foundations won't have a voice in some other venue, but this would at least honor the integrity and voices of those on the search committee. Finally, I'd also like to suggest that there be parent members on the search committee that don't also work for the district in some capacity, for example, a parent educator or a parent administrator, but just a straight-up parent. Thank you for the chance to share these thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. Mr. Mudd and Reverend Bodrick.
I'm sorry, is anyone else going to speak? I think that's everybody in the room, right?
Reverend Bodrick was one, I understood.
Okay, I know, I think we started at two, and now we're up to five, so I just want to see it. Barbara, do you want to speak too?
I know, I'm one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, she said, she said, let's say Reverend Bodrick.
No, I know, we just keep adding people, I just wanted to see if there was anyone else that wanted to sign up, so we get a, a complete list here. So we're set, all right.
First, I, I just want to concur and say that I support the major recommendations that the coalition of parent advocacy groups have made, you know, to you, and that Reverend Bodrick expressed earlier in the meeting. I think it's great to hear that there is a commitment to a search committee, a search firm, and a public process, and thank you, Alex, and to Dr. Motley for agreeing to co-chair. I do want to join in, in saying that I think a critical issue, as important perhaps as this public-private debate you've, you've been having, is the issue of the interim. Just two people recently, and I have heard, have made important comments on this. One was Paul Revel on the, what's it called, the Boston Public, you know, program, radio program with Jim Browdy and Marjorie Egan, and he was very explicit that an interim should be an interim, and that if, if, if the interim is not there, it will deter candidates from applying, and frankly, it's better to have that issue clear, and better for the interim, he said, to be known not to be an applicant. And then I have to say that I heard our former chair report on, come at the retreat, comments from candidates he had talked to, and among issues with, you know, what are the key issues, relations with the mayor, relations with, you know, the community and so on, was what's the deal with the interim? You know, and that's got to be on people's minds, and I would urge you to face that issue forthrightly and deal with it, so that it's clear that we can get the best applicant pool that is possible. Second kind of concern, I think that you're still debating about whether to be public or a private process. There are still issues about educator versus manager, at least that I've heard, and I don't think you had enough time to really debate those issues fully at the retreat. And I think it's crucial that you as a committee show leadership on those issues. Some people have said to me, we have the greatest policies and all our problem is only implementation. Frankly, I don't think that's true, and I think, you know, I'm concerned with the debates earlier tonight, you know, that, that we should be starting with education policy, how are we going to deal with the achievement gap, how are we going to deal with black students, Latino students, ELL students, what are the implications for the reorganization of central office on that for Build BPS? Let's start with the education plan and vision that Dean Coleman keeps asking for, and then see how these other issues fit in. And I think that this, this is a crucial time for you. The process for, we all know, Superintendent Chang leaving and the interim appointment raised into question, really what is the role of this committee? This is crucial time for you to make those decisions and to give guidance to a search committee and the community about how we want to work forward, move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Good evening again, and I promised to keep more comments brief, considering I've spoke already tonight, but I wanted to just follow up, as we promised, representing 12 groups, my responsibility is to come back forward before this body, and say, one, want to thank you for at least putting forward a timeline that we can look towards, to hold somewhat each of one of us accountable towards, but also I want to make sure we're, we're thankful that you're moving forward with bringing forward a search committee. One of the concerns though is making sure that the composition of this committee is very much so inclusive, and we want to make sure there's transparency about how we're coming up with who's going to be on this committee, and so we want to make sure that we're going to put forth as a body some recommendations moving forward. Last but not least, because I'm ready to get home to my wife as well, is to ensure that, that we bring forth that Ms. Ms. Perrell in her interim state stays in that position. We want to make sure that we can get a public statement very clearly from this body, as well as the mayor, that she will not be put forth as a candidate. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and I look forward to working with each and one of you soon.
Reverend Bodrick, I, I promise I had nothing to do with having the lights go out while you were speaking.
Oh, no worries, trust me.
Are there any other public commenters?
No, sir.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Is there any new business members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. O'Neill.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Have you finalized your thought process on the makeup of the search committee?
I have not.
So as you formulate that, is it possible to post on our website and have our communications folks send out a invitation that if people are interested in serving, that they should reach out to the school committee office and make their interest known? Are you open to considering people who are willing to reach out?
Well, let me put it this way, I've had, I've had plenty, I've had plenty of people reach out already.
I know you have, I was, I remember that from the past, but I think it is important that we actually allow people the opportunity to reach out if they are interested.
What I will suggest is that if there are people that are interested, they can email me directly.
Okay, can we put that on the website, that if people are interested in serving on?
Well, do we have anything that's on a website that, I, I'm not even sure that we have anything up there. Let me take, let me look at it, I think it's a good suggestion, I will, I will give it thought.
Thank you.
Other new business?
Yes, I, I would like to follow up on the students' request that, that the calendar show, you know, the, what is it, Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day.
Okay.
We're not alone in this, there are, you know, Cambridge, Somerville, or other, it would, you know, it would be an important thing to do.
I will ask, I will ask the district to take a look at it and give us their opinion on what the machinations are, and I, when I, and when I say that, I don't mean to slough it off, what I mean is that I'm not certain that we have the authority to make that determination, and so I want an opinion on that.
To put on, to put on the calendar?
To change the name of a calendar? To, to change the name of a state holiday? Yes, I, I want to, I want to know what the, the authority is to do that.
The city council just did it.
It was last year.
Yes, but that's the city council's action, and that's not our action, and I want to make sure that if we're taking action, we're taking action that's proper. And I'm not, and by the way, that's to say that I don't know that I necessarily agree with it, I'd actually like to learn more about it, which, and I, and I, you know, I want to note that I think it's great that we had students that were doing a project and learning about civic advocacy, and came before us to talk about an issue that is near and dear to their hearts, and are making a specific ask of us, and so I don't want to ignore that. But I think we do need to hear that, I think what we do need to do is give that process and give it its due review.
The thing is that it's October 11th, or, you know, it's pretty soon.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, but that's to that point, you know, this is not, to that point, you know, this is a holiday that's going to happen before our next meeting, so there's, there's little that we can do at 11:00 PM.
For next year.
For next year, if you can find out and look into it and see if we have the authority, then we would like to talk about it.
Yeah, and then just do it.
Right, got it. Anything new? Anything else? I do want to end on a high note, and I
I do wanna end on a high note, and I wanna loop back to what, uh, we were talking about with respect to transportation and our, uh, improving, uh, on-time rates. We have some other good news on transportation. Uh, TransDev has, um, reached an agreement with the bus drivers, and, uh, that was ratified early this evening, uh, by the bus drivers. So we'll look forward to hearing from, uh, the district at our next meeting, uh, a little bit more details about that, uh, um, that, uh, contract that was agreed upon. And I, I wanna take a moment also to, um, thank, uh, specifically the mayor, as well as Ms. Perrell, for getting involved and, um, intervening with, uh, TransDev and the, uh, the bus drivers' union, um, to help them get to yes and get to a contract so that we can, uh, move on and have, um, safe and consistent, uh, bus, uh, transportation for our children.
And John Hanlon.
And John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Um, and of course, all, the, uh, the, uh, the greater team, uh, within the district that has worked on this. Uh, Mr. Hanlon, our, uh, chief operating officer, that has spent many a late hour, um, and many a long day with, uh, the bus drivers and, uh, the TransDev bargaining staff, as well as many others. So thank you, John, and, um, uh, we look forward again to hearing a little bit more about this at our next meeting. So our next, uh, meeting indeed is the, uh, will take place on Wednesday, October 10th at 6:00 PM. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I think it's unanimous consent at 10:58 PM. Good night, see you in a few weeks.